You're watching H-CAM's educational channel, where you can find the latest educational content from our community. H-CAM helps provide educational content produced by students, faculty, and staff of the Hingham Public Schools System. For more Hingham community updates, tune into H-CAM's government channel on Comcast 9 and Verizon FiOS 30, and H-CAM's public channel on Comcast 97 and Verizon FiOS 31. I would like to call to order the Hingham School Committee meeting of February 13th, 2017 at 7:30 PM. And we will start our agenda with approval of minutes. And I would like to note, we're going to hold one item on our agenda that's 2.5 until the next meeting, the executive session minutes of January 26th. So we can proceed with 2.1. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the school committee and seek that joint meeting for November 14th, 2016. Sure, the second? All those in favor? Aye. Next, 2.2.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the school committee budget work session number three, held on January 19th, 2017.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the joint meeting of the advisory committee, education subcommittee, and the school committee, held on January 21st, 2017.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the school committee budget work session number four, held on January 26th, 2017.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. And lastly, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on January 30th, 2017.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Questions and comments? Audience comments are always welcome as agenda items are discussed. The school committee has set aside 15 minutes on this agenda to enable members of the audience to raise questions and make comments on any matter of general concern that is not on the agenda. Individual speakers shall be limited to three minutes, and speakers are reminded that the meeting is being televised and are asked to respect the privacy rights of others. Comments against any individual are not allowed by policy 3.7.5. Anyone for anything not on the agenda? Oh, okay. Okay, superintendent's report, number four.
There are a couple of items in the packet that I think you'd enjoy seeing. Both of them are actually three things you've heard about before, but this is some evidence, so to speak. So I would urge you that you take a look at the high school newsletter, which is always very informational, but in particular, it has an insert that illustrates some of the 100 Scholastic Art Awards that our high school students won several weeks ago. So some of the awards were for photography, and there's some excellent photography and pointing out the pieces that were recognized, so please do look at that. As well, you have in there the actual agenda for the ceremony that took place on February 1st, I believe, at the State House to recognize the commended schools, Plymouth River and so school were commended schools, so that program is there for you to see and see who the other winners are. Also, I believe in the back of the packet is information about the Futures City contest that Hingham Middle Schools participated in several weeks ago. So those are all there for you, FYI. I did want to make a couple of comments on weather-related decision-making because I certainly am aware that I'm not very popular in that regard. So I know that we have a lot of parents who are working parents, and I certainly understand that. I was a working parent in years that almost no moms worked outside the home. So I get it that when there are unexpected things that happen, like a snow day or some other, an early release, or any of those kinds of things that aren't anticipated, that it can throw your life into havoc. However, we do send a letter around every November, and it says the same thing every year, and it urges parents, particularly working parents of younger children, to try to make some plans in advance, backup plans, that can be put into place very quickly in the event of something like a weather emergency. I continue to get calls that people say to me, "You need to make the decision earlier because we need to make our plans." Well, I get the part about making your plans, but I don't purposely try to make a late decision. I don't try to be the last one calling, but I'm doing lots of things that I think I need to do in order to make a good decision for 4,300 kids. So I know you're annoyed with me because you tell me that when you write, and talking to the audience now on TV. I try not to be annoyed with you, try to understand your situation, but there are lots of steps that need to occur, and they're things like driving around, checking on the parking lots, doing that multiple times, see whether the plows are there, how many plows are at the high school, how likely is it we can get the lots cleared by the morning, things like that. As well, we rely a lot on DPW, and we have wonderful cooperation with DPW, but timing is everything in snow calls. A storm that comes along and is predicted for a time after we have to make the decision is really hard to deal with. And sometimes, and today is the perfect example, sometimes they're just wrong. And so then, I have people that call me in the morning and say, "What were you thinking of? Kids could've gone to school today." Well, yeah, but that didn't look like that at 5:00 AM. So anyway, there is a routine that we use for snow day calls, and I just hope that people can understand it and try to work with me. There will be some times when it just doesn't make sense to make a call the night before because if people are wrong, then we lose a precious day of school like we did today. So please be understanding. If you want to write because you just need to vent, that's okay too. I'll take it as that, just venting, but there are a lot of steps. All of the superintendents on the South Shore do communicate with one another. We have this kind of online chat to see what everyone is doing, but everyone's situation is different. If you're in a town like Situate or Marshfield, how flooding is a huge issue. Some towns like Norwell and Cohasset are more prone to electrical outages than we are. We're pretty fortunate in that regard. So while we'd like to keep track of what everyone is doing, we don't all do the same thing because our situations are not all the same. So hopefully, there won't be any more of these days, but if there are, try to understand that I'm trying to do the best I can for a whole bunch of kids, and I know you're trying to do the best thing for your family, but you know, being prepared in advance, having a backup plan is important. I was lucky when I was a mom because I came from a big family. My husband was from a big family, and we always had somebody that we could drop the kid. And I know that not everyone has that situation today, but you know, maybe people getting together in neighborhood groups can arrange something where that could help, people share the load, so to speak. So that's it on the weather. February enrollment, you have. The annual town report, this was actually due on Friday, but I asked for dispensation to turn it in tomorrow because I wanted you to be able to see it. It's in the packet. It, I think I can put it on the screen here. Suggestions and comments are welcome. It's pretty standard format, same format, the same sections that we have used every year. And, oh, I can't find it.
Item four.
Yeah, I just can't find it in my mess here. Could somebody, Linda, could you? Get the back light because it's glaring here. Okay, thank you. I can't see this. Can you see the?
It's glaring, huh?
Yeah.
Linda, can you turn on the other light?
The slider. Just slide it up.
No, no, you leave those off, no, the white one to your left, yeah.
This one?
Yeah. Hit the little button on the bottom. There you go. Thank you.
Should we just give you, we could, after the meeting, just give you our minutes?
Yeah, you can just make a note on them. That would be helpful, or?
I had just one edit in, one been that we talk about our paragraph five about our testing, and I thought, well, maybe we should push that down further and talk about some of the other ELA program and whatnot, since we're trying not to be so focused on testing. Maybe we can bury that a little bit.
So the four schools one?
Yeah, I'll give it to you.
Okay.
I'll just give it. So that was, that's all I have. I mean, a lot of good information.
If anyone has a suggestion for a photo, they always are interested in publishing photos, so anything that you can think of that we might want to highlight, like the new buses or something, John, I don't know, although we do have that mentioned in here.
You've got plenty of photos.
Well, take a peek through them, and if you can find something, we can send quickly because this has to go to them. Excuse me?
Reading program. We have heart and reading books.
Yeah. Okay. Those are good suggestions, though. Or the two commended schools, the certificate or something?
Yeah. I don't know, I feel like Dewey.
Okay. All right, those are good ideas. We can send in several. All right, anything else? All right, well, if you see anything, and we usually have a few days leeway. I'll turn it in tomorrow, but usually they have a few days before they have to actually submit it for printing.
I'll look at it again tomorrow morning.
Okay.
But good on the superintendent's report?
Yes.
Okay. Communications, communications received by the superintendent?
Yes, I received a letter from Postor, a parent at Postor. I think you received it individually, so they already have it recorded, and I am going to comment on that as far as the budget.
Okay. And it's like Brad is not here due to the snow day, possible?
Oh, maybe.
And other communications?
I did include in your packet a copy of the X2 message that I sent to special education parents last week because not everyone had seen it, so that's there for your information.
All right. I would also like to share a communication with the audience based on a communication that I sent out. So allow me to read statement for everyone. I wanted to take the opportunity to follow up on what happened at the last school committee meeting on January 30th, when two students raised issues regarding the high school principal retirement. I have personally communicated with both students to follow up on the meeting. I explained to the students that in the meeting, I had informed everyone that we understand there is a desire for further details regarding this issue. However, we were not able to share details on the matter. Subsequently, I learned that one of the students was out in the hallway at that time, and he may not have heard this explanation. I expressed my apologies to him for interrupting a portion of the petition statement. So, the public information that can be shared is that last spring, Dr. Gerard McCann requested a one-year rollover of her contract. It is the superintendent's responsibility to make decisions regarding employment terms for all administrative, non-union personnel, and the superintendent granted this request. Last year's school committee then approved the terms. Subsequently, Dr. Gerard McCann informed the superintendent of her intent to retire at the end of the 2016-2017 school year. Accordingly, the superintendent and the school committee proceeded with transition planning for the upcoming senior leadership vacancies of the Hingham Public Schools. Regarding her retirement, the superintendent sought the counsel and advice of the Salary and Negotiations Subcommittee, which is consistent with school committee policy, and shared that counsel and advice with Dr. Gerard McCann. Subsequently, the retirement decision was announced. I would also like to add, all of Hingham's boards and staffs, including the school committee and the school department, have an obligation by policy and by law to maintain privacy. It is not appropriate for any of us to discuss personal information about any employee, student, or community member, or have such information shared in our public meetings. This issue has previously occurred in our community and in other communities, and has been managed similarly. I shared with the two students that we hope they can appreciate that the school committee takes this obligation very seriously, and we would treat them or one of their fellow students with the same respect. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that, and now we can move on to new business and our public hearing. I just, before we officially begin, we have to make a motion to actually open the public hearing. So for anyone in the audience, we'd ask that you raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized. Come to the microphone here or at the podium, state your name and address, and then we will also follow town meeting process of please contribute new information if you want to speak, rather than continuously repeating the same issue over and over again. So, on that note...
I will make a motion to hear a presentation of the administration's proposed fiscal year 2018 operating budget and to open a public hearing on this matter.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. Now, to begin discussion in the public hearing, the administration will first present an overview of their proposal...
We didn't do all in favor.
Oh! I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the administration will present where we are right now with their proposal to us and adjusted changes, and then we will also have a discussion of, we'll also have a presentation from superintendent about some, how proposal of budget reallocations that could be used to fund special education initiatives, and then we will take comments and questions from the audience, from the public. So I will turn this over to Dr. Gallo.
Okay, and I'll apologize in advance for the fact that most of you here have been, at least some, at least some of the budget hearings, so you're going to see a lot of familiar things. There are very few changes from the last time, but I'll go through the things that are the most familiar more quickly. So we started the budget process last fall. We actually started with the planning meeting that the school committee has on a Saturday every fall, and as part of that planning meeting, we discussed priorities that the school committee had. We discussed the fact that we had been asked by the town side to present a level services budget, and that was the starting point. Subsequent to that, the school committee developed budget guidelines and budget assumptions, both of which were voted at different meetings. John developed a budget calendar, and by the first part of October, actually end of September, all of our administrators were given their directions for preparing budget materials. Those materials all came into us, they actually had binders, each of the six principals. Those materials came into us during the end of November. Jamie and I met with all of the principals and some of the directors. I say some of the directors because directors submit their budgets through the principals, but occasionally they would like to meet to talk about a particular project that they may have. So we met with them, I'm in November, and by the time of the December break, John had a rough draft of the budget, of the things that go for me at a year, things like utilities and so on. And on December 30th, I think, I sent all of you and also to selectmen and advisory committee, the subcommittee, information about the budget in the form of a budget message, which is the way we do it every year. Since then, we have had three, one, two, three, four budget hearings, one kind of summary hearing at the end of January. We've had a Saturday session with the advisory committee, which has become a tradition for us, and as well, we had the meeting, the joint meeting where we presented to both the advisory committee and the selectmen, I think, and the reviewer there. Still, meetings are scheduled. We also met last week with the advisory committee, education subcommittee, the ACES group, we call them, and we met as well with the capital L committee. So some of the things that we looked at particularly this year, special education, while the budget was up slightly, the net tuitions were down slightly because we had increased circuit breakup funding, and that's a good opportunity to remind everyone that the budget that we present, the administration's proposed preliminary budget to the school committee, still our budget, that it's always a net budget, and it's net of things like grants, it's net of things like tuition, such as for the full-day kindergarten and pre-K and Kids in Action, and it's net of some other offsets that come from revenues that we collect, such as for use of our buildings and grounds, and such as from Kids in Action. State aid was assumed to be fairly level, we've heard since then through TED and looking at, and he's reflected this in his forecast, that state aid is anticipated to be up, particularly based upon the governor's budget, which is a good kind of a clue as to where the budget is to be up. Despite that, we still don't have much hope of any meaningful response to the 2015 Foundation Commission recommendations. The issue there is a couple billion dollars to actually fund that fully, and our state has not yet started in on any honest effort to do that. This year, we had only a few anticipated retirements. Those replacement costs are budgeted when we know them in advance into the budget. Things like that are important because with Proposition Two and a Half limiting the amount of revenue that the town has, and the growing being down, it's things like turnover, where a more senior person retires or leaves and a younger, not necessarily younger, but a newer employee comes in. The savings for those kinds of changeovers are really important in being able to do things that are beyond the basics in the budget. So this was a low year for that. The 14 full-year leaves of absence is always a factor because we budget conservatively, which means we budget for all of the people returning after their one year of leave, and sometimes they don't return. We had one last week who decided to retire, so that was a fairly good savings for us in terms of dollars. So there's a March 1st deadline. We notify all of those teachers on February 1st, that's by contract. They have to let us know by March 1st what they are going to do, whether they will return or they will resign, or in some cases, they may ask for a second year. So we still have a few of those people, maybe five or so of those people, where we don't know their plans at this point, but that date is of course coming up. This is a unique year in that we have collective bargaining and some individual contracts as well, but collective bargaining for all six of our bargaining units ongoing, and I would say for salary negotiations. We did get a letter today that comes from the Food Services Worker Union, that they're ready to open negotiations. But because we're doing collective bargaining, our salary scale ends with this year for big groups like teachers and parent educators and bus drivers and custodians and food service workers and administrators. So what we have to do in this kind of a budget year is put in a separate line item called an allowance account, and I'll point that out in a minute. That is in the budget with an estimate that will allow us to bargain in good faith with all of those unions. So what you see in the budget pages for those bargaining units and for some of the individual administrators, what you see there is their salary for this year being carried for next year until we establish a new contract. And then overall enrollment, whoops, overall enrollment is pretty level. It's up a bit for the middle school, up even more for the high school, but down for the elementary. And you know, when we did the presentation for the selectmen and the advisory committee, we did show some budget graphs, I didn't include them here, but the elementary last year went down by four FTEs because the enrollment has been going down for the last four or so years at the elementary level. So those are some of the factors that we had to take into consideration as we were doing the budget. So we came up with a budget that we divide into three pieces. So the top one section in white is the regular education budget, and it has a number of functions. Those numbers down the side, the account numbers are called functions, and if you look way down at the bottom of the white section, and those of you in the audience have a handout that has this, you will see beneath line 7,000, it says allowance for increases. So there's an amount of money in the base budget for 1718, and that's for all of the staff increases where there will be an increase. And so the people in it aren't just the people that are in the special ed budget. There are folks there that are in there, they're not all in the regular ed budget. Some of them are in the special ed budget, the people, but the allowance for the bargaining that we will do is all in that one number. The other things are things that are in the base budget, and I'll go in a minute to what the base budget includes, but it does include some new things. We'll talk about those in the budget that haven't been there before, but most of it is simply information that is our estimate of or our knowledge of, where we have a real figure, of what the cost will be to do next year in 1718, what we're doing now. That's what a level services budget is defined to be. What is it going to cost to do next year, to provide the same services, the same kind of staffing, cover the same kinds of costs as what we're doing this year. The pink section, there are eight functions there, they all have B after them, so those are the special ed pieces of the budget. So you have the base budget for 1718, and then the next to that, the number that represents the dollars there. And then the very last section is a small section. It is for vocational students. As most of you know, if there's a vocational student who lives in Hingham, who applies to a vocational school and gets accepted, then it is our responsibility to pay for that tuition and also to pay for the transportation. Sometimes the transportation is provided by the parent and we reimburse for that. If a student is accepted at vocational school and has an IEP, there might be an additional charge for that in addition to the regular tuition. So the overall budget, way down in the lower right-hand corner, was up at that point 5.6%. And if you look at the components of the budget, 6.03% was the increase in regular education, 4.23% was the increase in special education, and in vocational, it was up 6.99%. But remember, that's three students that are anticipated here in this particular budget. So that's where we started for this year. Looking at the budget, this is the original budget, again, $50,279,561. This is what it looks like in a pie chart, according to the different functions there. So the biggest piece of the pie, which is $26,152,421, or 52% of the budget, is for regular instruction. So that's for teaching, textbooks, classroom supplies, everything related to teaching. The red piece that looks about a quarter of the budget actually is 24%. It's $11,961,295. And then the green is custodial and maintenance and utilities, all of the sections of the budget that John supervises. The principals' offices, that's administrative costs, counseling and health, so these are not just the... not just the guidance counselors, but the adjustment counselors and the nurses, all of those sorts of folks. The regular ed transportation is the brown. And then the school committee and central office, we have sections of the budget and expenses and people in the case of central office. And then athletics and student activities. And there's a tiny, tiny little green slice there that you can barely see that's vocational education. Now, we have made some reductions in the budget, and at this point, I think it's a total of $238,000 in reductions. And those reductions fall into several of these categories. So if we were to look at this again for the budget that we have now and ultimately for the budget that is adopted at town meeting, you'd probably find that each of the percentages and the dollars certainly are going to be a bit different. But in terms of relative size of the pieces of the pie, that likely isn't going to change very much. So coming back to the idea of a level services budget. So we looked at different things that have been proposed by the principals and things also that we knew at central office that we needed to have in the budget. And we applied our criteria for level services. That's what I mentioned to you earlier. So we took all of the requests that had been made by the principals and categorized them into three categories. One, things that we could justify as being level service-related, and they were part of the base budget. So they are additions to the base that reflect level services needs. We'll come up looking at those in a minute. Then we looked at some other things that were new service needs. They certainly could justify that they were service needs, but we didn't feel we could include them in the proposed budget at this time because they didn't reflect in our mind a level service. And then there were still some other things that were requested and absolutely could be justified by the administrators who were requesting them, but simply were not things that we could recommend at this time as we looked at other priorities and other needs and the grander picture. And all of this information was explained in the budget letter that went out at the end of December. So in this chart, you see the three categories of things. So the green items here, and they are listed by the function, the budget function appearing. So the things that are in the green are things that are in the budget as we have presented it and things that we're quite frankly recommending that stay in the budget. We think they represent level services needs. And while it looks like there are a lot of numbers there, that's partly because there's a heading that may be the amount of money and then the value under it. There are actually eight things in this list. Some of them are one-time things, like the NIESC accreditation visit. That team, visiting team is coming, 13 people, I believe, coming next September, end of September, to do the accreditation visit at Hingham High School. School for the last year and a half to two years has been working on a self-study, a tremendous amount of work that they have to do for that involves all members of the staff. And so we have to house and feed the team of 13 from roughly Sunday noon until Wednesday after school when they do an exit kind of meeting. In addition, we have to pay additional dues in the year that we have that accreditation. So the $20,000 is the combination of housing the team and providing their expenses, such as travel expenses from wherever they come from in New England, and as well, a double dose of dues for that visit. So that's a one-time kind of thing. And then there are some things, there are some positions here, a small number of positions. There are no additional classroom teachers at elementary or the second or secondary with the exception of needing to add or likely needing to add a piece of a Chinese teacher. We have a sixth-ten Chinese teacher at the high school. And as we look at the students who will be moving from Chinese II to Chinese III and the number of students we anticipate, we may need two more sections of Chinese. But certainly, if it turns out when we get our tallies, which is going to be sometime in March of what students have chosen, may turn out that we don't need that at all. The new things, we think, do fit the level services criteria. One of them is a split teacher. Teacher teaches, will teach half phys ed and half health at the high school. And that's there for two reasons. Our high school enrollment has been growing for a number of years. And we have two phys ed teachers at Hingham High School, 1,200 students. We have one full-time phys ed teacher at each elementary school. We only have two at the high school. We have not added to those two or to the health role during this period of growth. And so there's, we're expecting 40-plus more students at the high school than next year. So just on the basis of enrollment, we can justify that. But more importantly perhaps is the fact that the graduation requirements have changed at the high school and students will be responsible for more phys ed and more health. And there are adjustments that were made in what subjects are required. And in fact, the technology requirement that had existed prior is, has been moved to add credits that are required in phys ed and health. So we think that that does fit the level services criteria. The Math, Math Tutors is not in the green, so additional full-day kindergarten teacher. We have 14 sections of kindergarten this year. We're anticipating an enrollment that's halfway between the 275 we have this year and the 307 we had the year before. We're saying, we think 290 students will be what we'll have. And if we have 290, likely, we'll need 15 sections of kindergarten. So that is there, but it is offset, or will be offset, that additional teacher by the tuitions that parents are paying for kindergarten. And then the next one is the piece of a Chinese teacher, which we may or may not need. The elementary technology support, that's there for a very practical reason. One is that we have increasing numbers of devices in our elementary buildings, which is a wonderful thing. But somebody needs to add apps. Somebody needs to set them up. Somebody needs to make sure they're working every day just on a regular basis. And while we have a technology person, a technology teacher in each of the four schools, that person is spending most of his or her day doing instruction and teaching kids. As well, this spring, we will be doing online testing, which we've been anticipating for a couple of years now with the new MCAS II. And for this spring, it will be grades four and eight only. But starting next year, we're anticipating that all MCAS testing will be online. And we simply need more hands on deck if we're going to get kids ready for that and also implement it when it's here upon us, which it is in this coming spring. We asked for this person last year. It would be one person shared among the four schools, a certain number of hours per week for each school. And it's a fairly modest cost, but that's something we need. We've needed it for a few years. And in particular, to make sure that we can do the testing and keep all of our devices operational, that's a high priority for us. The one that says tuition for students with substance abuse issues, I mentioned at the joint meeting that we're fortunate in this area to have two high schools that are intended for students that have a substance abuse issue. One is in Boston and one is in Brockton. We're very fortunate to have these four students. The tuition is fairly modest as tuition's to any kind of an out-of-district school would be. This is a cost that we've borne each of the last three years. And we had put it originally when we got the first bill, because it's not as if we planned for the student to go there. But when we got the first bill, we paid it using the special ed account. It doesn't belong there because any student could need this service or take advantage of it. So we're not putting it in the counseling budget. So it's not an additional amount of money. It's just a different place to put a tuition that we might need in that case. The nurse, the high school nurse, we have two RNs at the high school. One has worked as a para, an RN, but still working as a para and getting para pay. And then we had one RN who also was a licensed school nurse. And so the position of the Department of Public Health is that all school nurses, to be called school nurses and be able to do the full range of, provide the full range of services that nurses provide, all of them should be duly licensed as a school nurse, as an educator, and also obviously with the RN license. We made that change last year at the middle school. So we have two RN school nurses at the middle school and this year at the high school. The second gal that we've had there for the last several years working as a para just has received that second license. So this is a net increase, not a new person. We've had two people at the high school, but it means that this person will now be on the teacher salary scale as opposed to being paid as a para. So that's something that we have to do and certainly can justify with the services that the nurses in both of the buildings have to provide on a daily basis. Certainly, we can justify the need, but it is with some influence, I would say, from Department of Public Health that we have to make this request. And the new maintenance person, this is, I think, the one leftover thing from our losing some significant numbers of positions and services at the time that we opened an E-school and had an operational override that really didn't cover everything we needed. We lost a maintenance person. That was in 2009, 10, and we've been asking every year since then to add the maintenance person back. Why is it level service? You could say, well, you know, you don't have it this year and you didn't have it last year. And I would say it's really because this person, the maintenance function, is really about fields, particularly middle school and elementary fields. And we have some work to do to make all of our playgrounds at the elementary level ADA accessible and to keep them that way. And secondly, our new middle school fields are opening in the spring and will require some fair amount of maintenance. They have sprinkler systems, there's a screen, screening netting that has to go up and down. There are baselines that have to be groomed and all those kinds of things. So we are putting that position here, even though it's a level services year, because we have those two big projects that are simply occurring now and need help. So the grand total of all of those things is 309, 365. And if you took out a couple of the one, the one-time kinds of things, it's less than half of the amount that we requested last year in terms of new programs or things that we needed to add to the budget. I won't go over to each of the other things, but you can see what they are. Remember, the blue ones are the things that were requested and simply that we didn't think met the level services criteria, so did not include them. And then the things that are in the red, again, were requested, could easily be justified, but didn't rise to the same level of priority as the things that were in the budget. So the green are part of what we call the base budget level services. So we made some changes in the budget in three or four different meetings. We've made some changes, and they're really all summarized here. So if you look at the budget page that's in the big rectangle on the left, you can see that's where we started. That's the 5.6% budget back from January 5th and the three sections of it, regular ed, special ed, and vocational. I don't know why John changed the colors around here, but still have the same three colors, but different sections. But in any event, in the rectangle on the right-hand side, you can see all of the changes that we have made to date. Now, when we presented at the joint meeting back on February 2nd, we were at 5.21%. Looking way down in the right-hand corner, it was 5.21. We made a couple more reductions here. So we now are in an overall budget of 5.1%. And we know that that's not low enough, but we're still plugging away. And there will be some other changes. There'll be those leave of absence people that will be coming along. I'm aware that there's a potential for one more retirement. So things like that will continue to happen. But all of those things that you see above that are the actual reductions that we've been able to take, and they are listed there in terms of the dollar amount in the account where the reduction actually occurs. And here they are. Now, these reductions are not a result of cutting anything that was suggested that we had included in the budget. And then are a result of cutting anything that was in the base before the additions. But they reflect other kinds of things. For example, you see KIA here a lot. And Kathy, I saw her come in, so Kathy Jordan is here for Kids in Action. I think most of you know her. She's here because we have a, later in the school committee agenda, we have a proposal to increase that fee. But because Kathy's program is so successful, both financially and otherwise, we are able to charge that program for a number of operational kinds of expenses that can be justified because of the Kids in Action use of our facilities. So for example, we, Kids in Action requires the use of some busing, moving kids from where they're dropped off in the morning to where they will go to school all day and back. So there we an offset in the budget. An offset then results in a savings, reduces the bottom line. And so there are places where it says Kids in Action transport. Kids in Action increase for rent, use of the space in our buildings. So wherever it says Kids in Action, that is an offset to the budget, which reduces the bottom line, but it doesn't reduce any service for us. Other kinds of reductions are an unanticipated retirement or resignation, one that we didn't know at the time we put the budget together. And it usually represents the savings between the person who is going and the newer person coming, who likely is at a lower rate. So there are several of those. There are two, I don't know if you can see it there, but there are two on this list that are green. One is about a quarter of the way down the page where it says teacher retirement, $41,296. This is a teacher, this is a new one. The two green ones are new today. So this is a teacher who was actually on a leave of absence and has decided not to return to teaching. She was on a leave, the birth of a baby, and has decided that she wants to remain at home. So $41,296 is that savings. And then way down the very bottom one, we have, excuse me, that's a retirement. And the teacher resignation one is the $15,000 that's at the very bottom. So to date, we have a reduction of $238,348 today. And that's the 5.1 budget. So here, it's summarized. So if you look in the box at the top right corner, that's the budget we're living under this year. $47,613,724 is the budget that we have and was voted last year at the town meeting for us. The regular ed piece of the budget that we're living under now is $36,63,107. And the special ed portion of that budget is $11,476,094. So that's the FY '17 budget for the '16, '17 year. If you move to the left of the box, again, at the top, this is where we started out with the budget. At $50,279,561 is the total. If you break that into regular ed and special ed, you end up with $38,238,536. And for special ed, $11,961,295. And then those percentage increases where we started, 5.6% overall, 6.03 and 4.23. I haven't included the small vocational in here. And then at the bottom in the green, here are the reductions that we have made to date from that original budget. And you can see the amounts, total amount, $238,348 for the total budget. Of that, $205,307 was, it shows up in the regular ed part of the budget. And Of that, $205,307 was, it shows up in the regular ed part of the budget and $33,041 shows up in the special ed part of the budget. There were no changes in the vocational part of the budget. So, you can see the percentages, 5.1%, 5.46, 3.94 for special ed. And so, where we are now is $50,41,213, and that's as of Thursday, but we haven't had anything happen over, over the weekend. Can we talk about the, the two requests as part of this?
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay, so, we've, we've had two requests for adding to this budget. And one of them has to do with Foster School where there is a fourth grade that has large class sizes. And so, that request was made to us early in the year and we've received letters, got some letters last summer, and I have, we have proponents here who during the time when you invite comments, probably will want to comment. So, that was one request and we haven't lost sight of it, but it is one of two requests. The other request was a request that came from us, from a group of special education parents, and the request was in the form, originally of a request to fund a, an evaluation of the program. So, that's the second request. And so, that's why this slide and this one are here, because I want to talk about the special ed one and the enrollment one. So, let's start with the enrollment request. So, this request was for consideration of an additional teacher. And if you look at the Foster School column or block, which is the second one there, and if you look down to the fourth grade, there are three sections of the current fourth grade. The class sizes are 24 and 24 and 25. Our average class size, this happens to be the February, the brand-new February 1 monthly enrollment. So, if you look at, down at the bottom there, we have 92 sections of K to 5, doesn't include pre-K, 92 sections of K to 5, and the average class size is 21.0. And you can see what the class sizes are in each of the buildings and each of the grades. So, the average is 21.0. That's a great average, but we know it doesn't tell the whole story. And if you're a, a teacher or a student or a parent with a class of 24 and 25, that's, that's higher than we would like for it to be. It's not the most desirable, but it is one of the things that makes the average 21 and not the average of 19 or so. So, the thing I would like to point out, however, is that while overall our average class size is a pretty one balanced, a pretty well-balanced across the four buildings, which says we have a good redistricting plan, the class size averages for the buildings are 21.0 for East, 20.3 for Foster, 21.3 for Plymouth River, and 21.5 for South School. So, those are good overall averages. If you also look at the total number of sections in each building, so East School with an enrollment of 482 has 23 sections. Foster with 466 students has 23 sections. Plymouth River with 471 students has 22 sections. And South, which is our biggest school at 517, has 24 sections. And they, the numbers sometimes break well for us and sometimes they don't. So, in one building, you can have some great class sizes and then you can have a bubble or a bump or something that occurs, and that is the case at Foster. I would point out, if you look across the buildings at grade four, look at the class sizes in Foster, 73 youngsters, 24, 24, and 25. Look at Plymouth River, 72 youngsters, 23, 25, and 24. And look at South with 97 youngsters, 24, 24, 24, and 25. So, three of the four buildings do have elevated sizes in grade four. That happens sometimes, don't have a good excuse for it. But as I look at this chart and then we look at the other enrollments across the district, this is not one where I feel I could recommend that we add a teacher for a whole bunch of reasons. One is, how could we add a teacher at Foster without doing something about Plymouth River and South that are not that far away from that? So, it's not an easy solution kind of thing. Secondly, as I look at what I know about class sizes everywhere, we have, probably our most serious enrollment is at the middle school and it's in the sixth grade where there are 14 sections of sixth grade. And all of those teachers, whether they're math, social studies, science, foreign language, they all have five classes with 25 or 26 kids each. So, five classes a day at 25 or 26 each means that they have an overall student load of 125 students that they see a day. And of course, it's not just the students they see every day, but it's also the parents. So, they have 125 families that they need to communicate with. So, I look at not just the individual class size, but, but also the overall load. So, while I know that there's, there are lots of good things that one can say about making those sizes smaller, and we heard some very good comments, I think it was Monica who actually explained all of the impacts that you find when you have a bigger class size and things like, that I hadn't even thought of, like space in the room and being able to have centers and all, all of those kinds of things. So, it's not a matter of my not being able to look at that and saying, gosh, I wish those were lower. But when I look at comparatively at our, our other needs and also realize that this is a level services budget, it isn't one that, that I could recommend adding to the budget. So, I haven't recommended that. Of course, in the end, it's a school committee decision as to what you're going to put in the budget or take out of the budget. So, certainly, my proposal, or lack of a particular proposal, isn't something that, that is a dead issue at this point, but I did consider it as we looked at this budget hearing to say, can I recommend something additional here or not? And I, I could not set that as a, a higher priority than a real, real need that I, I know we have at, at the sixth grade, and I haven't recommended anything there as, as well. So, that's the situation on the one recommendation. So, the other recommendation was a recommendation, as I said, from a group of parents of children with special needs and I'm going to have to close out of this. This is the special ed budget, it's the same one that appears on the tri-color slides, but I'm going to move out of it because I want to go to a different slide. So, we've had a number of meetings where people have been proponents of some money to be added to the budget, specifically at the time that was for the addition of dollars, and I emphasize the word addition of dollars, to the bottom, to the bottom line. So, we've had a number of meetings, one fairly recently, that I think we had some good consensus on clarifying the requests and thinking about ways that we could meet needs that were related to that request and overall related to our improvement plan. And so, Jamie and I have met and John and Jamie and I talked about the budget and looked at all of the different sections of the budget. And we have a proposal for school committee consideration, and if I can find where it When you hook this up to the screen, to the projector, everything gets mushed around and you have to find it. Here it is. So, the school committee has this in the form of a memo. I have some extra copies of the memo, so for any of you would like to take one away, we can provide that. So, so, this proposal allows us to do two things. It allows us to designate some dollars, places we would go, to fine dollars that support the goals, the improvement goals that we call the Five Pillars Plan. You know, it certainly is reasonable if you have a, a plan for improvement, and we have a lot of components of it that contain things like professional development and possible consultants coming in and that kind of thing. There have to be dollars that you have confidence that will be there to help fund that plan. But our goals were not to add to the bottom line, because we know the bottom line is already higher than it is. That was one goal. And in addition, we had a goal of not adding staffing, permanent staffing, that wouldn't be, that we wouldn't have a speaker or consultant or a trainer or someone like that. But the plan was to look at the budget and find places that we could designate to say, here's where we would go if we need to hire A or we need to purchase A. So, there are three places where we think we can designate dollars without adding to the bottom line, and they are in the blue. So, Liza, there are some extra copies of that memo maybe, our special ed friends here would like them. First of all, at the beginning of this budget process, we looked at our special ed legal budget, and that's in the S-2100 account. So, if you go back and look at that section of the budget, S-2100, that's where the administrative costs are. So, that's where Liz and Liz's, the two Liz's salaries are, for example, in clerical health. So, we actually added $10,000 to this budget early in the process, not because we had a specific case or situation in mind, but because we thought we might need some additional dollars. It's kind of an insurance account, that legal account. The legal account that we have in the regular ed budget, which is for our personnel negotiations, that's a very different account. That's an account where there's a specified number of dollars, it's a retainer paid to an attorney for doing specific things. This is an insurance account, quite frankly. We might not need dollars. On the other hand, a year could come along and we might need some dollars, and then we might, we'd have to pay those dollars and try to find other places in the budget to recoup. But we put this money in additionally with not a designated case or situation in mind. So, we believe that we could designate $10,000 from that account. And those monies in all three of these cases, them, those monies would be available based upon the guidance of the committee, which we're calling the Task Force, that's recently proposed and we're populating it now, which will consist of staff and administration on the school side and as well eight parents from, among the special ed parent group, one from each building, one from the out-of-district population, and a one that would be a representative of CPAC. So, that's $10,000. Then, we looked at the regular education professional development budget. A lot of what we're doing this year, we've begun already doing this year, is around professional development and training of teachers. And when you train teachers, it's not just special ed teachers you train, you also train the regular ed teachers and what they need to know. So, it seems very reasonable for us that we can, can take some money from the regular ed professional development budget and designate it to be added to the $10,000 from the special ed legal budget. And then, I think several of you have been to a presentation where we talked about the IDEA dollars. They're the federal dollars, the only federal funding that we get for special ed. It's a little under a million dollars. It goes up a little bit each year, a couple thousand dollars, and most of it is used to offset things in the budget. We offset some teachers, we offset some AVA hours, we offset some other kinds of consultants, all from IDEA. But there's a smaller piece of that that we have for projects that may come up during the year or unanticipated expenses, and we think that from that, we can designate $10,000 that could be used for supporting the improvement plan. So, in all, that's a total of up to $25,000. I say up to because I'm not going to spend things if we don't need them just for the sake of spending the dollars, but it's a, a total of up to $25,000. We think that's an adequate amount to make some significant progress. Can't do everything without some dollars for the pillars project, and we also think it reflects a good faith commitment by the school committee and the administration to realizing the needed changes in programming and, and services. The, in addition, we had already planned for this year, starting this year, but going into the next year, to make some changes in our social-emotional improvement planning there, some of our social-emotional learning, and so this $25,000 would be an additional amount of money to what it will take to fund that plan. And for that plan, we're hoping for, been turned down on one grant, but we're hoping to have some grant funds that support our, our regular education dollars. So, the good news is here is that we didn't have to add to the budget and we didn't have to put money in the budget and take something out in order to add this in. So, that was our second kind of criteria. How can we designate dollars without, doing without, things that we said are important to do? So, that's the proposal for, for that additional need. And again, obviously, the school committee would be the ones to vote on it, but this is our proposal in that, in that regard. So, if we go back to, there is one more slide to the prior slide. Where does that bring us overall? So, the next steps that we, administration recommends to the school committee. We recommend that you accept all the proposed changes to the budget to date as we presented them. So, that's the reduction, a list of reductions of $238,000 and this proposal to designate certain pieces of the budget for the special ed project. We recommend that you be prepared to vote on the school committee budget, your adopted budget on February 27th. And I know that each of you, back in January, when we had a meeting where you began delivering on your own priorities, each of you had things that you had, that were high priority, that are in the budget still, and some people had some other things. That's something that you need to, you know, think about wrestling with because it is your budget at some point. We're being selfish and recommending that we want your budget to be our budget, but we know that may not be the, the case. And we hope that all of us can work with ACs, they're sitting in the back there, not wanting to be identified, to clarify the magnitude of the gap, because we do know there is a big gap between the budget as we've presented it and the available revenues that seem to be forecasted or anticipated and that we own a piece of that gap. So, that we hope over the next couple of weeks that we can have more conversations there, and always good when we can come to a budget that both advisory and selectmen like and that we all can start out being in the same place. Often, that doesn't happen. We end up there most of the time that I can remember anyway, but we may not start out there, but that's, there's some deliberation and discussion and thinking on your part. This is simply our recommendation as we've recommended the rest of the budget.
Thank you. At this point, does any of the school committee members have any questions on what was just presented?
I just want to make the-
Oh, go ahead, Carlos. Carlos, go ahead.
I just want to make the positive comment. Some passion that I'm quick and throw constructive criticism out there. I am the type that, you know, I have to recognize that, you know, Dr. Gallen, your staff have been working very hard in coming up with this budget, so I commend you on overall budget, but also with this piece with the special ed, where creatively you come up with this proposal. So, I just want to say that, you know, I commend you for that and thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just for clarification for me, I know that there's been a lot of discussion about how personnel is obviously the large portion of our budget everywhere.
Yes.
And certainly, we don't want to lose any of our valuable personnel. When I look at this, this piece of paper, the one that outlines it, I just want to be clear. So, in things like Library 2500 or Counseling 2700- So in things like library 2500 or counseling 2700 or, you know, the same for special ed, there are personnel in those line items, right?
Yes, there are.
Okay, so it's not, all the personnel is not in the teaching-
No, we tend to use the 2300 as kind of the catch-all place because it's the most regular ed people, just as in special ed 2300B account has a lot of people. But there are people in all of those.
Right.
But when we did that allowance, the allowance is for categories in 2300, 2500, 2700, wherever there are teachers.
Okay.
There's just not as many of them.
And what, I've heard the number 83, I think, percent is-
82.99%.
Okay, so 83% is personnel of the whole budget.
And that was at the beginning, but the fact that we've reduced some personnel costs means that percent will come down. But nevertheless, it's been 80% or more for a number of years, so.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And certainly as part of salary negotiations, we're very cognizant of, you know, that and we'll be working from that end as well.
So mine is more of a procedural question because, you know, I know we had town hall miss some meetings last Thursday and I'm just thinking that having been through this process a few times, sometimes things get delayed or people want to wait for some information. So in the event, some decisions are postponed from what we currently believe, right? And we maybe want to wait, take advantage of new information in the event that happens. Our next school committee meeting, and so we have the 27th planned and then the 13th.
I wanted to go, oh, not to-
Okay.
I wanted to go over the schedule again on 6.7.
Okay.
When we talk about-
That's fine.
-that warrant order because it all relates to the schedule.
I mean, I just think maybe then we need to schedule another meeting.
Yes.
We may need to do that.
That was something I was gonna-
So that was just something that I was concerned about looking at.
And also, there are a number of ways that can be approached. Typically, the advisory committee, because their vote is the one that carries to a town meeting recommendation, likes to be the last to vote. And in the last several years, you voted the budget that you thought was the appropriate one and then we came back to it at a subsequent meeting. So-
And revoked it.
There are all kinds of ways that, the end doesn't really come until town meeting.
And that's why I worked, I wrote this worksheet up because I wanted to talk about that. I figured when we talk about the warrant article. So yes, thank you for bringing that up because it's relevant. Anyone else have any questions at this point? No, okay.
When I look at this question about the fourth grade problem, and I think I know the answer before I ask it, but I'm going to ask it anyway. It really isn't impacting the fourth grade bubble now, impacting each. What you're really looking at, what we're looking at is Foster, PRS, and South.
For that particular grade, yes.
In that particular grade. If we were to take all those kiddos and put them in a big pot and redistribute them.
Right.
My numbers are correct, counting my fingers, we could have 22, if we had one section, put it wherever you wanted, we could have 22 kids in that fourth grade in each of those sections at Foster, PRS, and South. Challenge is, you've got to take a kid, child from this school and put them over that school. I'm sure this has been kicked around in years past.
But you know, the most efficient way to schedule and the most balanced class sizes if you have one building because you can do exactly that, divide the children up and you get balance across a grade level. But we can't do that. However, you know, as we look at what things we can do to mitigate those class sizes, there are lots of things that we can do. Some of them might involve parent support if there were a class that not only had a large size, but some children that needed some extra support. There are things that we can do such as, well, if a new student moves in, suppose a new student moves in there next year and we could say to that student and the parent, you know, you're only going to be with us two years in the elementary school left, fourth grade and the fifth grade, next year would be the fifth grade, would you be interested in going to a school where you have a lower class size? We did that a number of years ago when we had some-
Me. I did that when I moved here.
Exactly.
I was in Foster School District and I was bused to East School because there was no room in Foster.
Right. So there are things that we can do like that as we think of planning. So I'm not suggesting that we should not be concerned at all when class sizes are bigger than we would like them to be, but, you know, we can try to mitigate those things in some way.
So parents can ask for that?
Yes. We already allow parents to request an out-of-district enrollment and based upon class size and the other building, most of those get approved. Hard to do with current students who've been in a building for a number of years. So I wouldn't ask for anyone to do that. We can suggest it and somebody might take advantage, but it might be a real option for someone who's moving new to Hingham and only has one year or two more years in the elementary to be in a building that has a smaller class size, that could be it. So we should be thinking of the things we can do to mitigate. In the same way, we're thinking about that at the middle school, I met perhaps a month ago with the sixth grade teachers and we tossed around some things, creative things that we thought that we could do to mitigate the impact. And interestingly, there are some of the things that we could do really had more to do with the total load of students than they did, than they had to do with the individual class size, so.
Dr. Gallo, how is that, a parent asks for the child to be in a different school, transportation?
They're responsible for their own transportation and that.
Okay, so it's not, the bus doesn't-
Sometimes, you know, if it's a family that's somewhat on the line, there is a bus that is nearby that they could do, but in general, that would be their own obligation for transportation.
Okay. I would just like to add, thank you for putting together the proposal on special ed. That was more than I was anticipating you finding, so, but I also understand that it's reallocation of things that, and support we're already doing to address that plan and I look forward to hearing the progress of the task force and what they come up with.
We have two or three people who've already stepped forward and those names I've given to Jamie and we made that outreach in the letter, so I think all parents have been notified about it. We may need to send out a reminder, but I don't know, do you have a timeline for when you?
No, we didn't. We can follow up in a week or so.
Okay.
Great. So on that note, I'd like to make it open to anyone from the public who has a comment or a question on the budget presentation.
Can we turn the lights on?
Wrong seat.
Excuse me, Kenny, 34 North Street. Dr. Gallo, just wanted to say, I thought your letter was excellent.
Thank you.
I really did. And I think that this proposal shows a lot of commitment to it, so wherever it goes from here, I personally wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. You always like hearing thank you. Yep, Diane?
Hi, Diane DiBattoli, 16 Garder Street, here on behalf of the CPAC. I would like to again, thank you for your letter, thank you everyone for their time they've put into this consideration of Rio allocation for special ed. And this is probably something you've thought of, but I just was hoping if by any wild chance there is money left, I know that sometimes the town has returned money, that we again, think of that as a potential source of revenue to fully fund Dr. LaBelle Waugh's vision. I think the five pillars are essential and I think to really move special ed where it needs to go will be, will be, will have some money behind that. So again, if, hopefully there's money left, I think it would be great to just look at allocating that for some additional training of teachers and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Monica Matthews, 102 Hershey Street, fourth grade teacher at Foster School, parent of a current fourth grader at Foster School and two fifth graders at Foster School. Obviously, Dr. Gallo's recommendation is not exactly what we wanted to hear, but I just felt compelled one more time to just plug for those high standards that we all have. The school committee has high standards, Dr. Gallo has high standards, all of the teachers do, but I think that as we, as decisions are continually made to have these large class sizes, I think those numbers across the whole fourth grade, across town are upsetting. I think that we put those high standards at risk. My whole fourth grade team and I'm sure every other teacher who has, every other teacher in town, we're teaching like our hair's on fire. And I just, and I, in order to provide the same level of education to those kids that I have in front of me now, that I provide every single year, no matter how many kids are in front of me. And I went over those things last time I talked about how there are other variables that don't change, that this remain the same. And so I just hope that as you look at the budget, the class at the middle school, I had them a couple of years ago, I know, you know, I just think as they come up again and again, you know, it's my hope, not just for this class that I have right now in the fourth grade, but just really for K through 12, that we have, we set a high standard for a more manageable class size everywhere because it does make a difference. We expect that Hingham Public Schools is going to provide that education for our kids and I just think class size is a huge component. So although I am speaking specifically for my class, when I look at those numbers and I hear about, you know, I know that class, it's in sixth grade, I just, I really believe we just need to, we need to make a commitment as a town that we, we're not going to have that anywhere K through 12.
Okay. Please don't sit down.
Okay.
Our goal is for happiness and not unhappiness. And so one of the things we're going to work on later on our agenda is our long-term vision for the Hingham Public Schools. And I welcome you to join us and come back and say what you just said when we go and present to the advisory committee and the board of selectmen and others in town of sharing what we want for the high standards of the Hingham Public Schools. Because we've been, we've been making our case every budget season, but one of the things we're collectively working on is trying to explain this, this vision more, which I realize we haven't really done, but I think now we, we're at a crucial point. And we have pressure from our own town, we have pressure from state resources, and we have to make the case of what do we want for Hingham Public Schools? And exactly what you've said, what special ed parents have said, what we've been hearing from lots of other families and teachers and ourselves. And so now we want to have that effort to make that case of standing up for, we want the best for Hingham Public Schools. And so I welcome you and the other people you brought to join us and help us because we, we do want that too. So, thank you.
Thank you. I know, it's hard. I just got to keep plugging for the-
You're right. We all have to keep plugging. Thank you. Anyone else?
You know, this year, I, I don't think we've ever had a public hearing where we had requests. Now, not that I want people out there to think that we're looking for you to come and ask for money, but really, it's, it's great. I mean, it's part of the process, it's designed to be a public hearing and, and we had two requests this year.
So, thank you all.
And on that note, so on that note, I will make a motion to close the public hearing on the discussion of the administration's proposed fiscal year 2018 budget.
Okay. I have a second. Any other?
Lots more exciting stuff on the agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. 6.2, "To review a proposed fee for late payment of kindergarten tuition for school year 2017-2018 as recommended by the community outreach subcommittee and act as may be appropriate."
This has become a great challenge for us. What seemed to be a very good idea, which was to, originally we talked about it, an incentive for filling out your papers and bringing, bringing in your tuition deposit early, has become complicated because of the process. Because we can have only one salary scale, so the salary scale had to be what we actually think we're going to budget. And so we couldn't make it an incentive. But then in terms of even making it a processing fee for a late payment or a late payment, however you want to think about it, we couldn't even have it be part of a separate tuition, a separate tuition because tuitions are all paid through third-party vendor.
And they can't add fees on?
No, and all of the money goes in there, so it's going to have to be a separate, a separate check.
Don't they have fees that are in there?
Well, they have their own fee-
Yeah, exactly.
-that is for them.
So they can be able to ask it.
I don't think they're just collecting our, our late fees. So, so we still believe it's a good idea and we've written, rewritten the kindergarten documents several times.
And rewritten.
But it's not as easy as it sounded when we first talked about it, so, but we still think it is something that we should do and-
So how are you going to work it?
So, yeah, did you figure out?
Well, we, we are asking people to give us a separate check for that amount.
Okay.
And we will deposit it in the tuition, so if it gets added to the offset that we use, it'll be there, but, but we can do it exactly the same way.
Okay. Well, that helps. And I would like to note that this is kind of a separate add-on fee. It's not a traditional tuition increase, which is why it came from community outreach because we felt-
Right.
-there was some community impact to it, so.
Yes.
Just from a process standpoint.
So to clarify what this is, basically, there's a tuition for full-day kindergarten and historically, unfortunately, for the, it's been two years now, right?
Yeah.
We need to know in order to talk about staffing by March 1st?
The first week in May is when we do our sit-down and here are the FTEs we have and here's what we can allocate where.
Okay.
So we absolutely need it by then, but we need the other pieces of the registration earlier and we've had significant trouble in motivating people to get their paperwork in, so.
Basically, we're trying to get people to get their paperwork in so we can get the staffing to teach to their kids. So what we came up with was essentially a fee, which boils down to a late fee, so-
Or a processing fee.
Yes, or a processing fee is going in. So hopefully people will understand that we need the information sooner than later and save themselves a couple, $125.
Would it be cleaner just to do what the late plan it does and just put it on the bill if it's in by a certain time, you don't have to pay that much?
Well, the problem is that all of the payments, that includes the deposit, the 10% deposit that they have to make, go directly to this vendor that collects fees. And so that gets set up for the year to divide the payments up into 10 parts and so there's no way to put this there.
Because we're not collecting the money ourselves. The vendor's collecting it on our behalf.
It's the same vendor that we use for Kids in Action and we use them for the tuitions for the-
You can't add it to the total when it gets re-
It's one total though, right? And so it gives kids with multiple, if somebody gets it having, because it don't, now we'd get two tuition structures, and then we have one, is the issue.
And obviously, if somebody moved into town after May 1st, that's a separate issue and, you know.
Okay.
Just make a phone call to the school. Be all good.
And the packets, I will say, are coming, we're just waiting for the tuition to be finalized.
Great.
People have been chomping at the bit.
Okay, well, that's good.
Yes, we're trying.
That's great.
They want to come. Okay. So, we have a-
And especially this year, we need to know early because we're projecting. I mean, we had 307 kids last year, we have 275 this year, so really it was just no pad or a toss-up that we might need another section. We could need two more sections and, you know, the sooner we need to know those things, the better.
Okay, I'll attempt a motion here. I'd like to make a motion that we institute a processing fee of $125 for late payment of tuition deposit for full-day kindergarten for the school year 2017-18 as of May 1st. Is that appropriate? No, as of-
April, March 31st.
March 31st.
March 31st. Sorry, I do, I know we discussed that.
Need double-tick.
Which would be a one-time payment. I'll second that.
March 31st.
Any other discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Who seconded that?
I did.
I did.
Okay. Six point three. To review proposed tuition increase for the integrated pre-K program for school year 2017-2018, as recommended by the Policy Subcommittee.
And this, of course, is for the typical students who attend that program.
So, we started with a, with a base concept of increasing by 2%. And then, what we ended up doing, because we felt like it worked out very smoothly, is we increased the two-day pre-K fee by exactly 2%. So that took it from the 1,250 to the 1,275. So that went up by $25. It just so happens that if you go up by $35 and then $45, I think that's how it worked out. Um, it, it's almost 2% as well for the three-day pre-K and the four-day pre-K, it's just slightly rounded down to the nearest $5. So it just seemed like a logical progression to have it work that way. And obviously, you know, we wanted it to have, to have it be a round number. So with that said, we are recommending that we increase the typical students in integrated pre-K proposed fee schedule for 2017-2018 by 2% for the two-day pre-K, and then by 2% but rounded down to the nearest $5 for three and four-day pre-K.
Can we have a motion, and then we can have further discussion on?
So I'll make a motion that we increase the 2017-2018 fee schedule for typical students in integrated pre-K by a 2% increase over 2016-2017, rounded down where necessary to the nearest $5.
Second. Okay. Any discussion, comments?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, I'm assuming the 2% is tradition? Or how did you come up with the 2%? I know that at the last advisory meeting, it was brought up that our teacher salaries are going up by an average of 4%. And, you know, when the fees are raised for, what is it? Kids in Action is also 2%, and we raised the kindergarten fees by 2%, so I'm wondering, is this kind of more of a tradition? Or should we be considering looking at the average teacher salaries, since they are 83% of our budget? Obviously, this is going to, we're going to be chasing these numbers after a while if we're not increasing them with what the budget's really increased by, so.
I would say about that, that each one of these cases is different. So, for example, these integrated pre-K programs, if we had no typical children at all in them, we would have the same teachers, number of teachers. So, um, the law requires, and certainly, I think we all see the tremendous benefits, particularly for very young children, of having typical, here, students to be in the class. So, we've kept that at 2%, not reflecting the cost of the teacher, because it really doesn't have anything to do with the cost of the teacher. If we had 10, well, let's make a small number, seven or eight children with special needs, and then we have seven or eight typical children, if we only had the initial seven or eight, we'd have the same number of teachers. So that's a rationale for keeping that. So in, in many ways, many parents would rather have a preschool program that's every day, the same number of hours every day, and our needs are different in this program. So, in some sense, people willing to have their kids come to this kind of a program are a real help to us, so we're not looking for them to pay a piece of the cost. Now, the money that does come from those kids becomes an offset in the budget, and it helps to pay for things like power costs and supplies and things that are relevant to the, to the particular program.
Do we have a problem finding children to attend?
Sometimes, some years we do. Some years we do. And as I say, it's because many parents would like to have a more regular program. They'd like to have a five-day program, and we have two, three, and four-day programs. So somebody is making, you know, a conscious decision to have at most a four-day program.
I know.
But we have, we went through a period, maybe three or four years ago, where we struggled to have the, the number of children that we needed in those programs. I think we've been okay, I'd have to check with Becky Case to be sure, but I think we've been okay more recently about that. The Kids in Action one is different.
Can we, can we stay on this?
Oh, it's the same question.
I guess, I was thinking with the 2%, with that has been traditionally what we have increased, but that we want to get people to come to the program, and so, and because it's a shorter day than other preschools, that this is a lower tuition than market rate of preschools, but the program is significantly different. And so, you know, you increase it too much, are we not then going to get this?
No, I understand, that's why I was asking, is there a waiting list of kids wanting to get into this program, or are we struggling to get kids to participate? So I think that would be a bit of a.
I think we're okay. We had some problems. We also try to populate the program pretty fully at the beginning of the year. So at the beginning of the year, if we anticipate that we're going to end up with, with 35 students that have special needs in the program, we try to, to start the year with 35 typical children, whereas the children who are entering with special needs come when they turn three. But it's, would be disruptive to have people coming in and out during the year. So we try to start the program at the beginning of the year with the requisite number of special ed kids. Now, occasionally, we'll have the special ed population that will grow a bit and might need to have to find some additional kids mid-year to be in the typical population, but, but usually, they try to foresee how many they might need and start them at the beginning of the year.
But I will say, I, I heard what the advisory committee said too, and I think for going forward, maybe we need to think a little bit different, but some of it was historic and some of it is trying to make sure we still get the people that we want to get. And, you know, there's lots of added fees on all our schools, and then it becomes, is it still public school, is it, you know, how, how do you keep that balance? But we do got to, we have to keep up with costs, so.
Well, and I was just going to say, this is just, it's the complete opposite of Kids in Action, because Kids in Action kids need us, so to speak. With this one, we, we need them to come. So it's, it's totally polar opposite spectrum of the population that we're trying to attract to this program. And again, just have to be very careful about not pricing ourselves out of it, since it is such a unique program, that parents would just rather send their kids to something more traditional someplace else.
Maybe this is, we can start tracking the numbers too?
Yeah.
A little bit more, so we can see what the trends are?
Mm-hmm.
And just kind of get us thinking and down those terms?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think for next year, we should make sure we know the enrollment numbers and some history on it, so we know where we're comfortable of.
Actually, I can tell you the enrollment numbers. Um, I'm not sure it's, I'm not, not on this sheet. I, but we have those.
Yeah. Okay.
I believe the kids are also selected by lottery?
Well, if we have more than we need.
Anyone else? Okay. We, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Okay. Um, six point four. To review proposed tuition increase for the Kids in Action program for school year 2017-2018, as recommended by the Policy Subcommittee.
Kathy is here, because she has a very unique schedule with all the different kinds of programming combinations.
Actually, Kathy, could you come up and explain a little bit what you're proposing? Because I believe we accepted what you proposed, and that it's not a, an across-the-board increase in every category, because you had, from what I remember, you had different amounts in different categories for specific reasons of how you enroll students and.
Well, this one is across-the-board. That was a couple of years ago.
It was across?
That was structured rates, but this one's just sort of across-the-board.
Well, I don't know.
Because that was a couple of years ago, I thought that we revisited rates.
No, like, for instance, the five days for, for pre-K, Monday through Friday, 3:00 to 11:30, it's the same for five days versus two days.
It's, um, so it's only five days, pre-K.
Oh.
It's always been the same. They can go to if they choose, but it's a five-day program.
Oh, okay. Good to know.
And it always has been, so there's no, there's no real change in the structure.
Got it. So however long you go, that's, you can go five? Okay.
And important to realize too, that of course Kathy's budget isn't part of the, of our budget. So in fact, the fees that she charges need to support the program. So when we talk about our personnel costs going up at the rate of 4.6 or 4.7% a year, that isn't the, isn't the case with your.
So is that then the same for the before-school? You can, you, it's five days?
That's correct, right.
Just you go as many as you?
As much as they need.
Okay.
Or as little.
Okay. But then the after-school, essentially, you, you choose how many days?
Two, three, or five days, right.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. So you did do across-the-board?
We did do 2% across-the-board, rounded.
Okay. All right. Is it clear in our?
No.
Discussion.
Thank you for running such a great program.
Thank you.
So do you want to make a motion, or do we want to recon?
So my only question then is, we're charging Kids in Action a lot more, we're charging them a lot more offsets this year.
Yes.
But they are only increasing across-the-board by 2%. So there was just that much money left over, that they're going to be able to pay those additional costs with only?
Yeah, we, I believe the operating, you know, if enrollment stays in, you know, along those levels, I think that we can sustain this type of funding for several years, you know, for.
I just don't want to be putting them in a position where.
Yeah. That certainly won't happen next year. I mean, we could always revisit rates the year after, but I, I believe that with the, you know, if enrollment stays fairly constant, over the next several years, we just can continue at that rate, because I think that the business is earning that amount of money. So I think we'll be fine.
The only thing we have to watch is that because our elementary enrollment is going down some each year, then we could get to a point where there simply isn't the critical mass to support the same numbers, but.
But we would have.
Kathy's done magic with the significant assault to her program that occurred when we went to full-day kindergarten, and we still have, I think it's 114,000 in all that's in our budget and offsets in a number of different categories.
Um, no, for this one now, it's 170.
Right, because it's almost $60,000 more this year that we've increased.
It's about $170,000, and I do believe that can be sustained, you know, for several years. The big thing is enrollment. Between now and next year, we'll have a cushion if we should not be able to reach that budget, right? And then we'll have the ability to adjust rates again next year. And while the program, it's an excellent program, and it's still well below market. But, you know, I mean, it's for the citizens of Hingham too, so it does make a lot of sense to, you know, go up extraordinarily. And I think the cost that we have offsetting the budget is justified, and, you know, the longer we go on, we can, you know, see others from other costs that this business should be paying, you know, similar to another market-based business that they aren't.
And Kids in Action also pays their benefits. The town pays the town for the health insurance benefits for employees who take health insurance.
And a portion of a custodian. So I mean, you know, it's, it's, uh, there's, those benefits are probably another $35,000, $40,000 a year, and the custodians, I think, .37 of a custodian, so that's another $18. So it's, it's definitely a business that's contributing to the operating budget of, of the school system. Good to know.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed monthly fee schedule for Kids in Action as provided to us by the Kids in Action program in the handout that's included in our packet.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So, and to the advisory committee members, we will relook at the percentages next year to take that into consideration, so. Um, six point five. To receive a bid for a 2017 7D 10-passenger transportation van and act as recommended by Director.
We did swap out the original memo to include one that has the budget, the capital budget allocation for this purchase was 37.8.
So the, yeah, the cost that, this was, um, the cost of the van actually went down this year, and that was because last year was sort of like a new model year, and they didn't really know what they had to do to put together a, um, one of these 7D vans. Because basically, they're just a Ford shelves or some other equal-type shell, and they pull out all the interior, and then they place the seats, and, you know, they sort of build them custom. So last year, they, Ford stopped making the original chassis that they knew how to do, and they came up with a new chassis. So the price is a little bit higher, but this year, they're used to it now, you know? They, they figured out the, the right model, so they, they didn't have to hedge as much. So this one is about, it's about, um, I think, seven or $800 less than what we paid last year. But in the capital budget, we did have $37, $800 for it, because I assume that it was going to increase the price. So the difference between that and 35, 92, you know, as we continue the year, we may overrun some capital items, so that can actually go towards the, an overrun of a capital item. We, we received three bids, which is pretty good.
Yep.
And, and one closed, quality sales. New England Wheels, it's, they've been the constant winners and the one vendor that has always placed a bid. Quality Sales is getting close. We'd love to see them come in, because we'd certainly love to be able to purchase from another vendor and check them out as well, you know, but $180. So, um, we're going with the low bidder that we know very well.
So I'll make a motion that we award a bid for one 2017 7D 10-passenger transportation van to New England Wheels of Belrika, Mass. at a total price of $35,992.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Okay. Six point six. To receive financial and budget updates from the South Shore Educational Collaboratives meeting held on January 20th, 2017.
Um, the board meets six or seven times a year, and because of new regulations that guide collaborative formation and business dealings, each time we meet, there is a packet provided that summarizes where they are with respect to the budget, and where they are with respect to enrollment, and, and cash flow and those kinds of things. And we typically provide the information for you, share it particularly with the Special Ed Subcommittee, and as well, put it in the School Committee Library Dropbox in a category that is for social ed collaborative. So it's a routine thing that occurs. The last meeting we had was in January, and this is the packet from that meeting. There's no, no action that's required.
Yeah. Okay. Six point seven. To discuss the Health and Wellness Center proposed warrant item and act as appropriate. So, um, on this item, so for the, so I wanted to talk about on this, I put in your packet, or, and I sent you, actually, I put it in the packet today, and I sent it, emailed it to everyone as well. Um, an update on fiscal 18 budget and warrant updates. So, let's go through where we are with the budget schedule first, because, because we're talking about dollars in this warrant article. So today, we have our public hearing. Tomorrow, February 14th, 6:30, there's a meeting with the, the advisory committee Subcommittee is having, they have posted a meeting. I neglected, I did not do my full duty on Friday, I forgot to post for the full school committee. I neglected, I did not do my full duty on Friday. I forgot to post for the full school committee to attend that because of the snow day threw me off of my thinking of what I was supposed to be doing. So, three of us may go attend or people may sit in the back of the room to listen. So I apologize for not having done that. So the, somebody may wish to get out of a meeting for an.
I actually have a plan for tomorrow, so.
It is Valentine's Day.
It is Valentine's Day. So.
You could bring your significant other with you. A nice Valentine's Day date.
But that sounds like a great day.
Be in town hall, just where we like to. So I, I will plan on being there and I will take notes for everyone. So if anyone else wants to join us, please let us know. But the subcommittee is meeting and I would imagine would start getting into more details of their view on the budget. Then at seven-thirty, the advisory committee is meeting as a whole. And so that meeting with the subcommittee is a very quick hour. Then at seven-thirty, of our reference, the town administrator is going to present the January thirty-first forecast report to the advisory committee. This is the same information that I provided to all of you last week. And I confirmed with them today that there's, there aren't any other changes that they will be receiving. So that is the report that shows a one, approximately one point one million dollar deficit in the budget so far. Also tomorrow night, at seven o'clock, the Board of Selectmen are meeting to hear warrant articles. And this is the meeting that was postponed from Thursday night when town hall was closed due to the snowstorm. And so at that meeting, they are hearing articles, it's like an eye chart, Z, T, R, S, X, W, and Y. So it's expenditure.
That's Thursday night, did you say?
That's Tuesday night.
All tonight.
Tuesday night. So that is expenditure proceeds from subdivision of bonds, this article Z, article T is like leasing regulations at Bear Cove Park. So that doesn't have to do with money, but that will drop. Article nine, this is harbor improvements. And what they're talking about is about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Some of it is design money for wharfs and sea walls, sea walls, I believe it is, for Downer Avenue and Martins Lane. And then there's about two fifty, three hundred in design money and then additional in construction money. But I believe they're asking for money to be taken from restricted fund balance of mooring fees or potentially even taking debt out and paying the debt off against the mooring fees. However, in addition, so, but then one of the issues is that those restricted funds for mooring fees, there's also supposed to be saved for dredging the harbor. So I don't know where all those mooring fee, how many, how much mooring fees there are in that account. And then Article S is the bathing beach bath house. And they're asking for an additional three hundred thousand dollars on top of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant received from the state to build the new bath house. And I noticed in the article that that three hundred thousand would also be drawn off of mooring fees. So that'd be interesting conversation. Then, so they may end up considering unrestricted fund balance for that, I'm not sure. Then Article X is regarding, the library is considering some design money and a state grant. Article W is the change in the number of selectmen. And then Article Y is for town hall architectural engineering. And there's no amount in the warrant articles as listed on the website right now, but I understand that they're asking for about fifty thousand dollars for design money, so preliminary design money to consider expansion of this building and looking at borings and, you know, some very preliminary design work. And that fifty thousand would come from unrestricted fund balance. So, so those are a couple of the warrant articles out there. Jim Taylor informed me that the warrant articles that were looking at money from unrestricted fund balance that he knew of was this harbor improvement issue and our warrant article for the high school project. And then, but then this town hall engineering as well. Linda, do you know of any others that you?
No, I don't. The other ones are coming from the board.
Okay.
So that's unrestricted.
Yeah.
That's not going to affect the twenty-fourth night.
Yeah. So then, on Thursday, February sixteenth, the Board of Selectmen are due to hear our, the high school health and wellness center warrant article from us. And I was also wondering if we would want to do a budget working session that night to start just talking about, not making any decisions, but just sharing ideas on where we want to go with the budget. Then as of, then we have school vacation week. And then Monday, February twenty-seventh, we have our school committee meeting, where as of right now, we were due to vote on a final budget. Then February twenty-eighth, which is a Tuesday, the advisory committee, it was due to hear a recommendation from the ACES subcommittee and have the school budget reviewed with the full committee. And advisory committee would also have a hearing on the high school health and wellness center warrant article. When I talked with Jim Taylor, he wasn't sure if advisory committee would actually vote that night on the school budget or probably hold it off until March. So Linda is nodding that most likely the vote itself. Okay.
And we vote all budgets the same night.
Okay. So the vote for advisory committee vote on the budgets is Tuesday, March ninth and/or Thursday, March, I mean, Tuesday, March seventh and/or Thursday, March ninth. The, so February twenty-eighth would be the advisory committee hearing on the school budget. Then Wednesday, March first, I made a note, is the deadline for any additional leave of absences on the school budget. Thursday, March second, the selectmen are due to vote on the school budget. Then Tuesday, March seventh, Thursday, March ninth, AdCom would vote on the budgets. And then the warrant has to be closed for town meeting. So, and then March thirteenth, we have a school committee meeting. So if we were going to, additional meetings we would have to have would be, I would suggest, one, a working session to talk through the budget, and then if we had to revote after March twenty, or February twenty-seventh. But we could convene for, just to vote for a few minutes, just to do that if we needed to. So that's why I wrote this all down for all of you, because it's a lot.
We have to vote before the selectmen do, correct? Or no?
We do, but we could revote if.
We can revote now.
We needed to. To be in line with them if we chose to. So.
I think historically, we have done that.
Yeah. So, if that helps you. I know, it's a lot.
Can you repeat that?
Do we have any sense whatsoever where we are on the Board of Selectmen's agenda for Thursday?
What's our time?
Because that's kind of, that's kind of important. If we're going to try to.
To meet.
Schedule a working session, we kind of need to know what we're dealing with. That's the only problem.
I don't think it's posted yet. Do you know, Linda, do you know by any chance what else they're voting on that night?
Yeah, because that's the only problem, because if we're not, if we're on the agenda at the beginning, then we could meet before. But if we're not on the agenda till later, that's the dicey part of trying to schedule.
Oh, having the working session?
Yeah.
But the working session is about the budget, right?
Yeah, it's just to talk through the budget of.
Right, but they're not mutually exclusive, but.
Yeah.
We'd have to be done before the Board of Selectmen meeting starts at seven as of right now because we have no idea where we are at on their agenda.
Well, we can maybe find out.
Yeah, yeah.
It would just be useful to know.
We have to post tomorrow.
Right.
Yeah, we have to post tomorrow too. We can find out in the morning from what their plans are for Thursday night, but. So. So. I mean, we either, we kind of meet Thursday or, or we postpone our vote for February twenty-seventh. And we talk.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, for your information, I'm not here on the sixteenth.
Okay.
And that's why I'm asking, because I have dinner commitment for something that I don't know that I can get out of.
We don't have a lot of other things that I'm aware of on the twenty-seventh.
This Thursday, yeah.
So I think the meeting could be almost all discussion and a vote. I mean, we don't have.
For the twenty-seventh.
A big, a big agenda for that night, so.
It's still early. It's two weeks away.
Well, it is. But what I'm thinking of, Carol, is that we're likely to have no changes that come up between now and Thursday. But two weeks from now, we could have some significant changes that you want to include in your discussion.
Okay. But either way, we need to talk about the Health and Wellness Center now. Yes, yes, we do. Yeah. So, okay, why don't we circle back to the schedule? And we'll talk about the Health and Wellness Center. Ed, do you want, do you want to talk about that or?
Sure.
I'm kind of putting you on the spot.
Well, we put it in there, if you remember, kind of as a placeholder.
Yes.
Because the date was, was coming upon us and the capital meeting had been postponed and variety of other things. So we put it there also with the thinking that it might be part of a combined project with town hall. And we didn't find until I just read this thing tonight, but they have other plans for their projects. So we're not going to be combining with them on anything. So, so it really is an issue. Is it something that you want to pursue yourself? And you need to have a presentation.
It's a placeholder. Just to quickly refresh everybody's memory, last year, our two advocates, Ray and Andy, did a dual request to both the AdCom and Board of Selectmen to do a phase two and phase three on the Health and Wellness project. We brought it out of capital outlay, subcommittee as a placeholder. And this year, we're simply asking for it to finish phase one, go into phase two with a, with a request for eighty-nine thousand eight hundred, eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
That's the most significant change from when we presented this last year.
Right.
Considerably. Last year, the presentation, if you totaled the two, would have been two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. This year, we're asking for eighty-nine eight five zero to keep the ball rolling. That will not be a one and done. That will require an additional one oh five and thirty-seven, one oh, one hundred and five thousand dollars and thirty-seven thousand dollars to come up with the two thirty-two to construction documents. Just to quickly refresh your memory, I spoke with our architect, Al Carney, and he, these are two thousand and sixteen fees, and he's holding these numbers for two thousand and seventeen. So these are, these are solid. I saw the PowerPoint, I don't know where I saw it, but I saw somebody did a.
I think Doc sent it to us.
PowerPoint. There it is, right there, yeah.
So this was a short version.
Short version from last year, yeah.
Like a million slides of the weight room and all kinds of other things that we condensed it for this presentation. So, but it does a good job of telling.
Sure.
Why, why we need this and why we need it now. And then it has some nasty pictures in there. I will say that the, this fan was the only one in that space. It's a room that had no windows and it comes right in from the outside and kids track in dirt and stuff. And it went fan, there are now two fans. So we made that improvement last fall. And you can see there's, you know, pipes and all kinds of things that get in the way. The equipment is not bad equipment that we have there. It was just a really unpleasant place to, to spend time.
Well, it was intended as a storage facility, correct? It was intended as a storage facility, right?
And because it's a storeroom, it cuts from the outside. So people are actually cutting through it, going to other parts of the, the complex there behind it, the gym. And so this just shows all of the conditions. Part of the project, though, is a new health classroom. This is another classroom that it opens to a corridor and it opens from the outside. And this room is used every afternoon for teams to gather, the football team to be in there and looking at films from last week's game and so on. And it's very hard to keep clean. Very, it's a long, narrow room. You've all seen it. Not a good teaching space. So part of the project was to add a classroom. This is a wrestling room that's used for lots of other kinds of things at the high school. And it's kind of a walkthrough. There's a catwalk off to the right as you look at this. There's the catwalk, wrestling room from a different view. And there's a pretty good description of the needs. Those are all still the same needs that we would have cited last year. And what else, if we're thinking of this now being an addition, part addition and part rental, then what are the other things that were a priority to keep in mind? Storage is at a premium, AD eight, accessibility, sound system that's separate from the rest of the building, multi-use spaces, and there are some in the plan. Equipment, mainly so that we have an equipment replacement schedule going on there and not just the equipment that exists now. And good access to the labs and the locker room and the one elevator, there's one elevator in this part of the building. And so we don't want to have to have a secret elevator, so we somehow have to work things so that we can use the same one. This is from the outside and you can see off to the right there, the one fan that was there in the wall. There is now one to the left of the door. It's the greenish door on the first level is the room that we're talking about.
If you hope, Dr. Gallagher, if you, if you look at that picture, you'll see as if there was a groundhog operating on the lawn, you'll see some dirt turned over. That was a drilling that we did. I'll, I'll make it a point to get a brief synopsis of the money and the work, the monies that we've spent and the, and the work that was done by the engineering firm to determine that, in fact, it, an explo, a expansion could be done. I mean, I got the information, I'll just synopsize it.
And so.
If you look at that, that picture, if you, if you got an eye for it, you can see where the tappings were done and there's four of them there.
Yeah, to see the suitability of the soil for being able to hand, handle a second.
We've spent a scoche less than twenty-five thousand dollars on studies to this point.
And so there's one conceptual design of what that same part of the building would look like, two floors. And this is the interior of the lower floor, where you still would have that wrestling room. And you'd have a health classroom, twenty hun, one hundred square feet. And then what was the old, or the current weight room, we call it, is the place that's over to the right. That would become storage again. And then the bigger space that's in front, which has the curved glass. And then the bigger space that's in front, which has the curved glass window, that is new construction. So, we'd be gutting all construction against, or new construction against the existing building. So, we get back some of the storage there. And then on the second floor, and this is conceptual, so there are other ways this could be worked out. But you see that bridge or the walkway in the back in the yellow in the middle? And then this wellness center, which is where all the equipment would be, would be on the second level looking out. And one of the first things that people said when they saw this last year was, oh, my gosh, you don't want the equipment on the second floor because you're pounding down in the classroom. But there was a good explanation for that, Ed, right? I can't recall what the justification for putting it there. Certainly aesthetically, looking out on the fields and so on, it would be a nice place to do exercising.
The comment was to put some significant structural between the first and second floor and...
Yes, right, to mitigate that sound. But there was a particular reason for putting that there.
The architect thought it would be a nice view.
And the one elevator that it was important to remain, to remain is if you look on the left-hand side, there's a little space that has an E in the middle of it, upper left piece of the drawing. So, that was a conceptual design. So, what we were looking for was a cost estimate for, originally, it was for the complete schematic design, which would get us through construction documents. But that was the two-thirty-two. And now what we're talking about is eighty-nine, which divides that conceptual, the schematic design into three separate pieces, only one of which we'd be looking for this year.
Doc, can you just speak a little bit about the change in the educational program and how that's being impacted or not being impacted?
Yeah, I mentioned this, of course, as part of the budget. But we, children will now have, students will now have more health classes. And therefore, we need more teaching space. And in addition, the current health form is totally inadequate for any kind of instruction. And then in addition, we need more phys ed. That mainly because of the growth in the number of students. So, right now, our freshmen and sophomores are assigned phys ed on a regular schedule. We also have a few phys ed classes that could be for upperclassmen who take it as an elective. But most of our juniors and seniors meet their phys ed requirement by doing one or more of several options. If they're in an interscholastic sport, they can use that for meeting the requirement. They could belong to a private gym or to the rec gym here and put in a certain number of hours. And the counselors have to monitor that so that when we say they've met the phys ed requirement, they have met it. So, or they could put together their own kind of a program and have that signed off on by one of the phys ed teachers and monitor. We simply need more phys ed teachers because we've got more kids. And we need more health because our requirement is changing with regard to the health curriculum for a lot of pretty obvious reasons, not to mention the drug issues and the opioid crisis and all of that kind of thing. Social, and a lot of it is the social, emotional health of kinds of things. Exercise being an important part of that as well. So, we would need to change some of these slides, but easy enough just to modify them if we were to go forward with a presentation for both the Selectmen and the Advisory Committee.
Okay. Lynda?
Could you repeat the numbers again? I didn't quite catch them.
The request, the request is for eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
And that's for Phase One?
That's for Phase One. And by the way, I'll have a, I will have memorized exactly what that involves. No stumbling. I'll have it memorized.
Well, it gets us to construction documents as opposed to simply a schematic design. And also, I think we have said in the past that we would be looking for some options here as well. So, you saw our conceptual design, which was certainly one option, but that we would be looking to have some choices that could be made about the size of the structure.
Right.
Location is pretty much determined, but what goes where, that kind of thing.
Dr. Gallagher, I'm just playing with ceiling tiles and they're two foot square, if I'm right. And I've got a seven-hundred square foot of space here. What exactly is, I'm just looking at twenty-one hundred square feet. What's a standard classroom size?
Well, I think the idea here was that that space, that space could be...
Well, this is seven-hundred, that's...
The space could be subdivided. Remember, we said, you see how it's now open to that exercise room area?
As I recall from the presentation, there were going to be like sliding walls. So, you could subdivide it and use it for different classes or different types of...
And certainly, some of that space, that rounded place, it's counted in the twenty-one hundred square feet. But, you know, it's probably not usable except for like a classroom library or something. It wouldn't be teaching space there because of the...
But you don't have a top of your head, what's a standard classroom?
Seven to nine hundred square feet, seven to nine, depending upon level, you know. MSBA has guidelines and depends upon what grade or what subject and so...
Thank you.
All right. So, we had put the Warren article in as a placeholder. So, we need to, we still need to decide and take a vote of actually moving forward or not. So, can I have a motion to put the discussion on the table and then we can...
I shall move.
Okay.
Second, yeah?
Okay. So, now, we're going to discuss, putting this forward. Does anyone have...
Well, I had voted against this being a Warren article due to the fact that initially, this was introduced in a Subcommittee for the Long Range Planning. We put in the Capitol just for the eyes to see it, so we don't lose track of it. And then a few weeks ago, when we only had five members of the School Committee, was introduced as a placeholder. So, obviously, I didn't feel comfortable in voting in favor of being on the Warren article. I understand that was just a placeholder, and I'm glad we bring this back today. And the reason why I'm against is that, you know, the School Committee last year did a fabulous job in putting together, you know, a very nice presentation. And unanimous, you went before the town meeting, the Selectmen, and presented your, you know, the efforts, and they voted down. They went to the town meeting and no action was taken. So, I'm afraid that we're going to go back to them again and we are going to be shut it down. I mean, nothing changed from last year. As a matter of fact, we are experiencing a higher shortfall. So, I wondered what has been, what has changed? The Board of Selectmen that was there last year is still there. Have they indicated that they are in favor? I haven't heard anything. I mean, as a matter of fact, I sort of like, you know, have been waiting for feedback from the Advisory and the Board of Selectmen, whether they are in favor of this. Now, for the record, I am in favor of renovating the Health and Wellness Center. I'd love to have the, you know, a facility where it's close to what we have at the middle school. In fairness, it's really not, doesn't look good at all. So, I don't want people to think that I'm against. But I have also indicated that I'm willing to work within the private partnerships in order to raise the funds necessary to do something about the Health and Wellness Center. So, I'm only saying that so people don't think that I'm against it because there was some indication from some fellow members of the board that was totally against. I'm not against. So, I am against this being a Warren article.
Well, can I ask you a question? So, you're for it, but you're against it because you think we'll get shot down by the Board of Selectmen. What do you think as a School Committee member, your role is? Isn't it to vote for what you think the School Department needs and then to convince those people to support it?
Well, I saw what happened last year. And nothing has changed in terms of the huge developments coming to town. They're still out there. So, the conversation was that, you know, somehow, the Board of Selectmen with the town administrator would be grouping together several projects.
And they are now, but they didn't include us.
I haven't seen that yet.
We just heard Liza say that there are three or four different design money articles coming forward.
Well, I saw some of that, but I haven't really heard...
No, I'm saying, but they didn't include us with that, right?
So, that's my point.
Right. Well, I know, but just because we may get turned down, doesn't mean we shouldn't advocate for Back to Monica, what we think is excellent for our school system and what we truly believe we need. In particular, when we have a change in the curriculum, I think this is something we should be advocating for. And people are going to turn us down, but you still have to, I think, stand up for what you believe in.
Well, I believe that we definitely need a change. But do we need to, we need to have a better approach in approaching this request. And I don't find that, you know, through our, at this moment, is the right approach with all the unforeseen expenses coming up.
Yeah, I don't see people after just donating over a million dollars for the Fields Project coming forward and donating a lot of money. I mean, you may get some money that will, some people that will donate something. But, you know, people that are going to donate also want to have something named after them. And we have a very restrictive naming policy in this town, naming by law. So, that kind of puts a little bit of a damper on getting those people that might donate a million dollars to come forward.
I do think there were some things that have changed, Carlos. And one of them is, I think, the thinking about overall projects has changed a bit on the Selectmen's side at least. I can't comment on Advisory. And that is because that we let a whole year go by last year with nothing new happening. And a year is important, given the number of big capital projects that we have here. So, I think there's a thinking that there may be some merit in at least getting things designed so that you know what the overall cost would be. And that then would help you in doing some prioritization about timelines and so on for what we need to do when. I think that has changed the whole concept of, you know what? We may have to spend money to be able to get answers to put together our grand plan. So, and I've heard that talked about. Second thing is that even though we mentioned this last year in the forum, the town forum, when we went to the Selectmen, the very first words that we heard from one of the Selectmen was, well, I haven't heard anything about this, you know, it hasn't been socialized and all of that. I think we're further ahead with that. And also, last year, we started out with the two-thirty-two. And it was kind of after the fact that we said, well, we can break that schematic design into three pieces and let's only ask for the eighty-nine, nine. And I think it was too late to make that change. So, I do think there are some things that have changed.
Well, I mean, in addition to that, obviously, I come up with, you know, I think we are talking about having an asset management plan in place, a master plan. And we're not quite there yet. Then we have, you know, the possibility of requesting money for Foster, that, you know, we're not sure what's going to happen there. Then there is money for Plymouth Rivers. So, you know, there's a burden on senior citizens right now, you know, living on a set, fixed set of income. So, I'm just concerned of, you know, spending more money at this moment.
I have to kind of agree, though, with Carlos. I haven't heard a lot of people, I have from the schools and from the administration, but I haven't heard so much from the community that this is a must or a priority for the town. And, I mean, Foster is always coming up, PRS, those are the big flags that I'm hearing, and it's not the high school. And I think the town is actually kind of tired of hearing about school projects and new buildings or add-ons or additions. And so, I kind of am struggling with this, that I just don't know if this is the right time for us to be pursuing this project, even though I can see that there might be a need there. I just don't know if it's really a priority for this town right now.
Well, I'll tell you what I think's different, Carlos. You didn't think, what's changed? What's changed is a reduction in the request of one-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. You know, that to me is a pretty significant change. And that's two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand minus eighty-nine eight fifty. So, it's a one-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollar change. Just to quickly remind you, we've already spent twenty-five thousand. No time like the present. First question people are going to ask is, what's it going to cost and how long is it going to take? You'll hear that. We're never going to know that until we, unless we proceed. In terms of the Board of Selectmen, I'd remind you that the vote last year was two against and one for. So, really, all we have to do is really convince or swing one of the two people who didn't feel that the time was proper last year. And I would like to think that some of us will, I don't know, do our best. So, I, I don't think this is going to go very far if it doesn't get a lot of support from the Selectmen. We're never going to get a hundred percent support from the EdCom. We're just, we're just not. But that's okay. But I think it's important that if we're going to do this, we do this as a group.
Okay. I'd just, at this juncture, just be repeating what everybody's already said. So, I feel strongly, like Carol said, that, you know, Carlos, if you, if you think it's a project that should be done, to some extent, it's the old, you know, if you don't ask, you don't get. So, if we just let it die a slow death, I think we're doing a disservice to all the work that's already gone into it for something that even you admit is probably a really good idea. And in adding to another thing that I feel has changed, there has been a lot of conversation, at least to my understanding, at the Selectmen's office about the fact that there is a lot of debt service that's being retired over the next several years and that maybe this is the time to start thinking about some capital projects. And so, if this is a capital project that we believe is something that we do want to move forward with, we, you know, we need to keep it plugging away. And if we just, as we're doing here, reduce it to the smallest possible increment this one time, just keep chugging away a little bit at a time, hoping that we'll be able to, you know, accomplish it. And it could be that something with Foster or PRS will pop up. And this could get bumped down the road as we're moving forward. That's always a definite possibility. But if we do nothing, I think it dies. And that's kind of a slow and sad death after everything that's been put into it, particularly for something that everybody's saying, yeah, you know, we probably do really need this.
I would have to say that my thinking on this has changed. I think it should be a part of our overall grand scheme, long-term plan. And I think if we do that, then that's a way to ensure that it's not going to die because it's certainly necessary at the high school level. Obviously, we've put the personnel in place with the graduation requirement change, and that's the most important thing. But, you know, having the space for them to do what they need to do is important. However, I have to say that I think putting this forward now sends, I would rather put the message forward that Foster is the priority. And I just don't think, you know, we, when we did the Capitol Outlay Budget, we literally didn't ask for anything at Foster except one chunk of money for unanticipated repairs that are happening every day. So, I just, I can't in good conscience say we need a Health and Wellness Center for a high school that, yes, it's going to be difficult, but they can handle it. I think that's sending the wrong message. I think our priority needs to be Foster, Foster, Foster.
Am I mistaken? But again, Foster, obviously, isn't that a debt exclusion issue?
Construction would be.
Yeah.
And MSBA would be involved.
As opposed to, they really are...
Oh, I get, I get that Foster's a big, long-term thing and that this is a one little thing. I just, I get that.
They're not competing for the...
But it's competing for town money. And in my, my mind, it's all one thing. And I am a School Committee member, but I'm also a town resident. And I need to advocate for the schools, but I also need to understand that the town may have other, other issues as well. So, I think the schools have been very well taken care of over the last ten years. I'm not saying it's also not a need, but again, I'm looking at priorities of this town and I don't see it as a priority at the moment.
Can I add my own, my individual thoughts? I looked through the big picture, but I also looked at our School Department priorities. And from when we... And I, from when we talked about this in the fall until now, I feel that the Foster situation has changed, even since we did the walk-around, that the winter with the thermostats has brought to bear a more urgent situation. And that also, considering all the discussion of the fire station and what we'll have to work with people on, on the depot, that I feel of our own staff and what they are capable of managing right now, that their attention needs to go to dealing with Foster and, and the long-term of Foster, as well as the short-term, and of managing the depot. And that we have the opportunity, with the town administrator's proposal on the capital projects, to incorporate this into that plan. I, I agree with Carlos that, for me, this is a priority. But I feel that we have some urgent priorities of, for student, you know, what's really gonna impact students. Unfortunately, they've arisen now. And I do look at the budget impact, that, you know, we're at an overall deficit. And if I have to choose where we're gonna put any money that's available to us, if I have to delay something, this would be a choice for me to postpone, not to, not to eliminate, but to postpone. And my thinking has really, really in the past month, my thinking has changed of hearing from Dr. Steller, and I heard from some other parents, too, at Foster. So, that's where I am on it. So, it's definitely worthy, and it's...
Can I just comment? So, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I really see the projects as two different projects. I mean, Foster's a five-year project. So, if, if we're saying we can't do any other capital project until Foster's taken care of, then, you know, we're, we're handcuffed, we can't do anything. And with the debt retiring off and other, other groups asking for money, whether it's from mooring fees or unrestricted fund balance, why is it, that's fine to ask for that, but we couldn't ask for the same thing? I, I just, I don't disagree with Foster. Foster definitely needs to be a priority, I agree. But we can't put the rest of our life on hold until Foster School gets resolved. It's years.
I'm looking at the budget of, we're at a 1.1 million dollar budget deficit. And if any money's gonna be taken from fund balance, even to fund capital, that, where are my priorities right now? They're on other things than, than us, for the students right now, this one year. So, I'm looking at it immediate, 'cause I don't see this as something that we couldn't go back to. But I also don't wanna put the Warren article through and then have it voted down, because then we're restricted as to many times we can bring it to town meeting again as it's done. So, that worries me, too.
I also think it's a bit of a PR thing, because, you know, we may all be able to wrap our heads around, you know, this is debt exclusion and this is, you know, isn't. But, you know, and no offense to the citizens of Hingham, but, you know, there's schools and there's other stuff. And, you know, a lot of people say to me, "Well, we just did that for the schools." And, you know, so if, I, I just think personally that Foster needs to be the focus, and anything else we do is gonna take away from the town's willingness to go there when necessary, which is sooner than later.
Well, I'm disappointed, but I'll just share this final thought with you. This, I have in my notebook here, the very, the first feasibility study that was done for this area. And it's dated February 24th, 2003.
I know it needs to be done, and it's the oldest part of, it's probably, is it the oldest building except for Foster? That, that wing of the high school is our oldest existing facility.
Non-refurbished.
Except for Foster School.
PRS, I don't know, parts of PRS.
So, I, I agree, but...
Let's vote, okay.
I'm disappointed only because we haven't made a single step to Foster.
I know.
So, doing this doesn't get us any closer to the five-year window that we've been forced.
Can I ask a question? Is that allowed?
Sure, yeah.
Is this gonna be...
Can you come up to the...
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Jamie Kenny, North Street. Is this going to be accessible for the community? So, at night, with adult classes, people like for...
Yes, we talked about that.
Okay, sorry.
No.
Yeah. Not with detail, but yes, there's no reason why it couldn't be, because students would be using it during the day and after school, and could be in the evening.
I think that's a big piece of this, you guys.
One of the questions, Haven Sheen, 1036, I mean, I think actually the plan is quite interesting, but it's being attached to the oldest part of the school. What's the lifespan left of the area of the building that we're attaching it to?
It's, it's doable.
We would have to do a little something to that.
The oldest part of the school, when people say that, they mean the gym itself and part of locker rooms. But there has been added space there.
At one point, when...
And we're attaching it to that added space.
And at one point, when we were talking about the project last year, we were talking about renovating locker rooms and those other areas around it. So, and that health classroom, that's older part of the...
That's just in the back, though, where you drive behind the building.
Yes.
Yeah, around, at the corner.
Right.
Yeah. Diane, did you have a question?
Just to follow up on what Dr. Gallo said before, Diane, in Appleton, 16 Garden Street. She said this was an unusual year, that two individual requests were brought in front of the town, one for the smaller class size and one from the specialized community. So, to Kay's point about what does the town need, I think the town has expressed needs, and this has not been one of them recently. So, while I understand it needs to happen, $98,000 for, or 93 for an engineering...
Eighty-nine. Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, a lot of money, I'd say, for putting up a very needed, but a health and wellness center compared to child potential academic people. It's, it's important to keep the academics first. So, I appreciate those who held out on this, and I think you're putting the priorities in the right spot.
Well, just to respond to that, one of my strongest feelings has always been with the level of anxiety that the high school kids deal with. Frankly, health and wellness is becoming a much more imperative and needed lifestyle choice, because exercising that anxiety out can be really beneficial to being a better student. So, I think you have to keep in mind that, at least in my opinion, it's all wrapped together, so...
You might, you might have a different opinion if you, you might have a different opinion on this project if you were, were to sit in the classroom that is earmarked to be replaced.
I, I think it's great. I just think one of the pieces that you're missing is that it's really for the community. It isn't just the students, and I think that's a big piece to this.
I think, I think, I think education, right now, with respect to the challenges that high school kids face, is an absolute top priority. And if you go into the classroom that we're using right now, it's the pits.
Do you mind coming to a...
Either one?
Yeah, either one.
And those of us who, and those of us who support the, the health and wellness...
People at home to be able to hear you.
Welcome the principal from Foster School.
Dr. Steller, Foster School principal, but also a resident, 75 Summer Street. I think it, one of the things that I wanted to be sure and let you know is that I'm in the process of developing a plan on what we do every time one of those steam pipes breaks. Katie is in the middle of identifying, we now know that we have five areas of the school. If we were to lose a steam pipe tomorrow and it's cold, we might not have school. We've had six days already this year, thank goodness, it wasn't that cold. So, we were able to move children around. And so, what I'm trying to do right now is say, "Okay, they're identifying the five main connectors to the steam, so that then they only have to turn off one-fifth of the building." And then the plan is, how am I gonna move everyone else to the other spaces in the building? So, we do it with a smile, but it doesn't mean that it's the same kind of educational experience if throughout the next, as the winter months continue, or, 'cause the concern is really over the winter months, but the winter months next year and the year after, and how we can plan accordingly. So, are we making it work? And are we thinking positively in the sense of what should our plan look like? And it's just about complete, so that we'll know when a few, this, this last weekend, we didn't have any pipes break. But as you know, we've had steam pipes breaking every weekend up until just this last week. And it is challenging, but I think, you know, when we talk about Foster School and those, what I call the structural base of which everything else is built, there are some real physical concerns about maintaining the educational program and in relationship to the other buildings in the districts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And I think for, for people at home who may be thinking, "Well, why haven't you done anything about Foster?" It really feeds into the notion that the town as a whole has many capital projects. And we've been told that the fire station project really has to have the top priority. And I don't think any of us disagree that that isn't a really big priority. But in a sense, that has kind of stalled progress on a lot of other things. And so, here we are with no, no projects last year and, and nothing this year that involves us. But meanwhile, the project that the town had kind of identified as the, as the, the one that has to stop the dominoes falling isn't any further along either. So, it's really very frustrating, because all of these projects are intertwined one with the other. And so, to, we've got to do something, somewhere quick, because if we keep pushing things out, we'll never get any of them done. And the Foster one is a, is a big cost. The design cost is what, seven?
Seven thirty, something like that. Seven hundred and thirty-eight.
It has a placeholder. I mean, we've identified it as a need, it has a placeholder in the five-year capital plan, so that's a good thing. But until we can prioritize some of these other projects and get them on a kind of a linear list, which is what we've been told needs to happen, if we keep delaying being able to get costs of them, then when we do go to present, they say, "Well, how much is the total cost gonna be? I couldn't possibly consider looking at design until I know the total cost." On the other hand, if you don't do the design, you'll never know the total cost. And it's so frustrating to be, know we have so many needs town-wide and not see any of them moving. I mean, we're crowded in this building, tremendously crowded in this building, senior center, rec. We have one person in this office, has an office down the hall, borrowed, temporary. But, but there's so many things, and it just is very frustrating that we're not moving forward. And I had thought earlier this year that we would be moving forward, at least to getting a list that we all agreed on. And that's not happened.
You estimate the cost of the feasibility study at Foster, $729,549 as a placeholder. 729-549.
Did you miss the motion?
Already did.
Do we have, do we have a motion? And a second? And we will now vote.
So, all those in favor of moving ahead with the Warren article? Aye.
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 And opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so the nays have it.
Well, that'll be hard to...
Well, on our next item, we're gonna talk about where we go next steps with that, so... It's not coming off the list. Did you get the names?
I did. I got the names, too.
Okay. So, that brings us to continued discussion about the school committee's longer-term planning initiatives and priority setting.
Just Liza, can you, can you put in one for me, a master plan? I don't think, I think you missed that, which is, I had mission, asset management, which is the same thing.
Also, are the...
All right, so, all right, let me make some notes so that I can...
Are the green initiatives that are considered in the base budget, they're also on, on our priority list?
Hold on, wait, let me, hold on, let me finish. Carlos, let me just look at this to make, see where I can...
What document are you talking about?
What are we talking about?
Uh, hold on.
They are in the, in the base budget.
Correct, I'm just wondering if those are also discussed in this list here, when we mention counselor, nurse, or...
Well, I know what you're talking about.
Maintenance fields, because I do feel, we'll get into a good discussion, I guess I would wanna start that. But I'm just wondering, on this list here, with the, the green...
Those are in the budget.
But are they also discussed here?
Those here.
In the, what we did for all of us with our priorities? Because I kind of was struggling a little bit with that and just...
Well, those things are immediate needs. I think this whole project is more long-term.
And they're sort of broader, broader categories, so, we can, I mean, we can put in prior, whatever priorities we wanna put in. So, let's see. So, like, we didn't put in math tutors. We, we had, I believe we had, let's see...
Ideally, all of these things would be complete in the next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I'm...
We didn't get into, like, nitty-gritty things, as opposed to...
However, some of the things on the capital list for this year, because you don't know how much money we could get at this point, could be on that list.
I do, maybe health, I think, line 21.
Yeah.
I think that might overlap.
Well, and I was thinking a little bit of the fields, you know, that we do have new fields at the middle school, and you would hate to see those new fields not be maintained after we just spent so much money on them.
So, we can, we can...
And I didn't.
Ongoing, this is still in draft form, so we can...
Make changes.
Add, yeah.
Liza, how does the field, the field-wide management fit into this? I mean, obviously, this is supposedly is an ad hoc group that the Board of Selectmen have, the field-wide, which we haven't met, right? I mean, how does that fit within, with the school's priorities?
I don't know if it does. I think it's, it's a separate entity, and that, I mean, I would say of our, when, when we talked last week, when we were talking about this, we were looking at an overall message of how do we sustain, grow, and innovate for the Hingham Public Schools? So, I believe with sustain was, you know, focused on, I began a draft of... So, we talked about facilities, you know, I think we wanna sustain our facilities in good shape. And so, if we're gonna add something to all these aspects of it...
What I mean, vision somehow is that we, 'cause we sort of like... What I mean vision somehow is that we, because we sort of like are in charge of the majority of the fields out there, that somehow introduce a conversation with the stakeholders, so be it, you know, the selectmen, rec center, and perhaps the advisor, I'm not sure if the advisor fits in there. I'm sorry?
Youth, youth sports?
Youth sports, but bring the stakeholders together, but we sort of like, you know, be the management of those facilities, that whatever revenue we collect, because we sort of like have ownership of the majority, that that revenue come to the schools, the majority. Obviously, the rec and Board of Select may take a little piece. But I believe that in the best interest of raising, you know, revenue, that was sort of like, you know, centralized management of all the fields in town. But that's not a, I mean, we would have to bring in the Board of Select, and they would have to be on board with that conversation.
Well, that's the whole point of why that ad hoc committee was formed. The school, and the school committee is the largest stakeholder. The Board of Select and I are in charge of two fields, interestingly enough, and the Recreation Department has several. The way I understand it, the last meeting that I went to on that committee, was they were doing an inventory, quality and quantity of all of the fields in town, because whenever the question, well, when the question came up historically on this group, as we case in point, when the middle school was, was towards the end of the build-out of the middle school, a question was raised, a suggestion was made, several of us proposed that a look into putting a turf field at the middle school. And, and it was turned down, as everybody knows. And one of the comments that resonated with me was, well, you need more fields, but how do you know that? And that was the whole point, quantify and qualify. And that's where that committee is, or not. You'll have to answer, I don't know.
Yeah, that is why it's important that we meet again. But again, I mean, obviously, we, as a school committee, have to be on the same page with that, that we are, that's something we'd like to pursue.
Well, it's kind of reinventing the wheel. I mean, what you're suggesting is exactly what, what that committee has talked about. When I was there, well, Ray and I were there for the past two years. So I, I think, I think it's an interesting suggestion, it's a good suggestion, but it's already, it's already been done.
But, but has not been.
Well, I don't know that.
Has not been put into practice, because I mean, obviously, in Queensy, that's all we did in Queensy, and women just did that. And women, because they sort of like centralized the management of all their fields, they were able to sell to the whole community, you know, the renovation of the, of the fields throughout the city, throughout, you know, the town.
Well, so, Carlos, one of the things I could suggest is under sustain, I drafted under facilities, was to address aging infrastructure, adapt to current pedagogy, pedag, I can never say that word.
Pedagogy.
Pedagogy, and teaching practices, continuous maintenance to prolong useful life of newer facilities and storage requirements. But we could put under.
Is that sixty-eight?
Six point eight, six point eight.
Yeah. Under item six point eight, possible goal statements.
Two.
So under the sustain heading.
Am I looking at, oh, you're looking at other paperwork? I'm looking at the chart.
Go to the next page.
It's all about the base.
Or the previous.
Previous, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so where are we? What's cooking?
So, do we have under sustain?
So Alex is definitely.
How do we sustain, grow, and innovate? So, under sustain, I put in the vision, mission, and core beliefs, which are the same as what we have, so I'm assuming we want to keep those.
Keep scrolling down.
And then the academic program, which I just, I have not flushed this out, I just started drafting it. Program of studies, class sizes, varied curriculum, specialized instruction, positive social-emotional learning environment, and then we have staff, positive teaching environment, career development, competitive compensation and benefits, professional management standards, and administrative services. And then facilities, which I had read, extracurricular programs, state standards and requirements. So we can sustain other things, but that, I mean, maybe under innovate, we can put something down about revenue generation, looking at how we, you know, some of innovate is also working with other town departments more collaboratively, something, innovation we already have happening. But maybe we can look at that theme of.
Don't we need some input from the administration as well on some of these topics?
Yes. This is in.
Talking about academic programs.
One comment in what you read about facilities, where you say continuance maintenance to prolong useful life of newer facilities? I would just say a facility is what, you know, we're not trying to prolong only the life of our newer, that comes across, not quite right, if you get like that. So I don't want anybody to think that we only care about the newer.
Just the newer ones cost more than the older ones these days.
Yeah. But, I mean, obviously, we're going to try to prolong the useful life of all our.
Well, assuming we're going to have replacement.
What does, um, full-day kindergarten mean under grow? What is meant by that?
Um, I meant that to talk about whether we want to include that as the town funds it, or.
Why is that, though, be under growth, other than growth of the budget?
That would be what it is. Yes, and always. Yeah.
Talk clarify?
Maybe we need a new category.
I mean, this is, this is, it's still to be decided if that's collectively what we want to do, but as far as.
Or if it's the right category.
Yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, well.
Sustaining it, it might be better under sustain, because my fear is we can lose it if we don't.
Well, I was thinking it would grow the budget, and that's one area that would just automatically grow the budget, as opposed to if we did something different that might change how we're using resources, so it doesn't just automatically grow the budget, but it would alter the budget. So, and that's also why I put the per-student cost under innovate, because I don't, you know.
That was actually my next point.
If, if, you know.
That should be in the grow category.
Yeah, well, so I thought it was going to be in there, and then I was like, well, okay, so I know our per-student cost is the lowest of our benchmark, and then, you know.
Well, I was actually wanting to know the thinking behind that, when you say our goal is to be above the midpoint compared to our benchmark communities. That was the first time I've heard that.
No, it's actually like a, it's been basically the position the town has taken over twenty years, that we always want to be above the middle. That's always been what we've.
Although we're at the lowest.
We've always, right, aspired to be above the middle.
We should be, well, we're proud of being the lowest.
Well, so, so that's the.
I would be wanted that goal of being above the midpoint.
Right. So that's the dilemma, because someone close to me even said, that's the best thing in the world, is that we're the lowest on my.
Yeah, produce the best.
Yeah, and I was like, well, but now we're the lowest, and now we're getting pushed a little bit, so.
It shows we don't waste money.
So, right, but then how do we, how do we?
Sometimes you have to spend money to make money, so.
Innovate towards the midpoint, or just above the middle. But I actually, I wanted to be able to show, that's why I sent you the spreadsheets of the difference of the benchmark communities, that if we spent two, and I can show this to, talk about this to the audience.
And you know, that issue of the per pupil cost is, is interesting in a number of ways. First of all, part of the reason that we're there is that we are only one of, I think, three communities in that list of twenty that pay fifty-fifty health insurance. All of the others pay different percentages that are higher. I'm not sure that's necessarily something to be proud of, it'll contain our budget, that's for sure. But being the lowest of the twenty, remember, that's based upon actual dollars, not a percentage. But we hear often that statements that make it, make it sound to town folks as if we're loose with money, I mean, when our, our personnel costs go up four point six or four point seven percent. And that really is the basis for budget allocations that we get. And yet, dollar-wise, in terms of the benchmark communities, we're not spending very many dollars per child. We simply aren't. And so if we want to do the things that we see other communities doing, we may have to spend more dollars overall.
So the numbers that I have are based on two thousand and fifteen, because that's what was on the DESE website, to be able to compare. So it's a little old for Hingham purposes, but for comparison purposes, we are, our per pupil cost is twelve thousand, three sixty-eight. And the middle, the average spend of our, of all the benchmark communities, is fifteen thousand, seven oh seven fifty. So it's a difference of three thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
And the top is?
That we're below the average.
The top is, what, eighteen or?
The top is twenty-two point.
Twenty-two thousand.
Seven.
Seven sixty.
Weston. So of, with four thousand, three hundred and seventy-one students, our budget would be, if we spent the average, our school budget would be sixty-eight million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Yeah.
So that's why I put that as innovate as opposed to grow, because to, to move that much, that gap, would be ridiculous, it'd just be unreal, I think. However, if we even incrementally moved, wow, what could we do with that? We'd probably get a big bang for a buck of some of the incremental.
And some of that is.
If we did it in an innovative way, as opposed to just.
Some of that is kind of artificial stuff. You know, obviously, the more buildings you have, the bigger your budget, because buildings cost money. And that's why you see towns like Waymouth, or is Waymouth now a city? Oh, anyway, cities like Waymouth.
That's a mess.
They have a higher per pupil cost, because they have still a lot of their little neighborhood schools, multiple buildings cause multiple infrastructure, not only facilities, but the, but the people costs. And in a place like Weston, that is smaller, they're going to have fewer facility costs, which means that the dollars they have are even going further into the realm of kids and benefits for kids.
But I also provided you data on the percentage above required net school spending, so that based on the recommendations of the state, not just looking at the per pupil spend, but the percentage above, we're still, we're third from the bottom at twenty percent above net school spending. And the average of our twenty-one benchmark towns is forty percent above. So, I mean, that relates to health insurance, definitely, and other fixed costs. So, um, I don't, you know, I, who knows where we would get, we wouldn't get to the average, because everyone has their own individual cases. But I think if we maybe moved a little bit, we could perform that much better than, than we already are.
So just going back, just briefly to the full-day kindergarten.
Yes.
We'd need to flesh that out a little bit more about.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Because I don't even know that we've ever done a consensus of what people feel, you know? If you're talking about funding it, we've never actually talked about who thinks we shouldn't, who thinks we shouldn't.
Right.
Yep. I just wouldn't want people to assume that means that we're saying we're going to fund it, because obviously, we've never talked about that.
Should the next step of this, to give it to the administration, get some of their input, as Carol said? And then?
Yeah, and then, we have to start, you know, if these are the areas we want to focus on, and also look at the chart again of priorities, because everybody kind of answered it in a different way.
Right.
What was the criteria?
That's a good question, because the only reason I put playgrounds for number one was because I thought we really had no choice, that we have to, you know? I put that number one, because I thought we were under the gun to get ADA.
I want to go back and look at it as well.
I don't think I saw.
So if this was just my dream list, without that threat of that ADA, you know, hanging over my head, I might, I would not probably have put playgrounds as number one, I just did it because I thought we were under the gun in that regard.
So why don't people go back and revote on your list? And with the idea of what are your big vision priorities as opposed to, you know, nitty-gritty, like more of a three-to-five-year vision of what's important, or what we would like to have seen accomplished? And, and thinking of these themes of sustain, grow, and innovate. And, you know, I think grow, for me, is what do we flat-out think we need to expand? And whether it's full-day kindergarten as just that example of, if the, if the public is, if Hingham is going to provide full-day kindergarten for families for free, that's a flat-out grow of the budget. And we haven't had that conversation, or do we want, we should have that conversation before we include this, but that's what I was thinking of, that would entitle just a flat-out growth of the budget. And like, grow administrative staff, we all talked about, I put that in there, because we talked about an HR person, special ed staff, potentially the central office staff, the website communication staff. And then those were some specific things we talked about, that we just think we need to expand that. And also under grow, for the audience, enrollment population in the Hingham, in the high school and the middle school, you know, we know that's an issue for the next several years of flat-out growth there. Forty-B developments, you know, we're going to have some more school-age population, we don't know how many, but we know that that's coming. So, so those were the only things I had under grow.
Do you want those priorities in rank order? Like, some of us did one, two, three, four, five, whereas I had, like, these are my top ones.
Yeah.
That's how I did mine.
Well, how do you guys want to do it? You want?
I just did a.
Yeah, I mean, that, everybody kind of.
We did it differently.
Different, differently.
Well, uniform might be helpful.
Yeah, I don't think it helps until we.
John weighed three being the best, what is it?
You got to weigh them. I think you got a bunch of big ideas on the sheet, and I think you all need a lot of time to talk about it together. I don't, I don't know that you can go off on your own silos and come up with a voting to try to prioritize them. I think you all have to talk. I think, I think it's, I think it should.
It's time for a meeting.
Like, four hours, just talk about this stuff.
It's time for a retreat.
Single item, just talk about all these items.
Yeah, probably.
Well, and define a little bit more, like, when we say foster, we're talking about a new school, we're talking about renovations, and.
Oh, God.
No, but I mean, define it, because it's, or storage, what is really behind that word storage? Is it just for the central office? Are we talking storage for?
Votes.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Votes, yeah, so I think we need to define them a little bit more, as far as what I mean.
So we need a long meeting.
We probably will.
We might need a meeting just on this.
Somebody's thinking in the closet, and someone else is thinking.
Just so you all can talk about it, and you can.
But think, just keep thinking, like, add more to it.
Not at ten forty.
Yeah.
Now that you saw solar power, I would like to see this number's going up, all right, guys, solar power.
Okay, so.
So we should go back and think about it.
Go back and look at our lists.
Yeah, add more priorities, and add your priorities, think about your priorities for the three to five, and think of the themes of sustain, grow, and innovate, and we will work more with the administration too. Okay, good. Oh, and just on, I put at your places, and magazine article that just came out today from Commonwealth Magazine, that this is the new president of the, of MASC, the School Committee Association, and some of his ideas of education in the future. So I thought that would.
Where is he from, Liza?
He is from Barnstable, I believe. Yes, Barnstable School. So, um, and that's sort of related to the state efforts. Okay, six point nine to receive notification of the appointment of Angela.
Boy.
Boy. Same family?
Oh, she's going to go by, uh, her maiden name with kids, but that is her legal.
Sounds great.
And so welcome to Angela and Laura Kennedy, uh, found in Langley Bluff Technician. We thought that was gonna be difficult.
I know.
That's great, welcome. And then just received notification of the resignation of Samuel Perkins, parent educator at the high school. Then forty-eight hour items.
Originally, I had thought we would put the annual report there, but she took care of it in the other category.
And so no other forty-eight hours and.
We can keep this.
Subcommittee updates.
Policies. Policies, we just met last week, and I don't have my calendar with me. I don't remember when our, I apologize. It's, it's the week before our next school committee meeting.
We're meeting before the March thirteenth meeting.
Um, and I think we're probably going to finally have section six ready for our first reading. We got a lot of feedback, thank you very much to Dr. Schreier for coming to one of our meetings and going through some of the sections that have to do with immunizations and physical exams. And then we also got a lot of feedback from the nurses about some real practical language that, you know, now some of those sections are gonna actually say what's being done, which is a good thing. And so with all of that done, it appears we're probably gonna be ready to finally have that for our first reading, because I know I had, we had given it to you in a very draft form, and it is very long, so if you haven't looked at it yet, you might want to start before we get to a first reading, and you have to, so you could do it at your leisure. So that's, that's the thing that we've been spending the most time on.
The outreach, are we getting March seventh or the?
So. Oh, and it's March third is the policy meeting.
Thank you.
March seventh, yes.
Yes.
Okay. And salary negotiations are having in their next bargaining session on March sixteenth.
Long range planning, um, February first, I met with the capital outlay committee. And I guess my question is, because it's on the bottom of the list here, do we have another appointment scheduled, a date with the capital outlay?
No, Libby has asked me some questions, so I'm getting the answers. I'll send those off to her probably tomorrow. So I, I don't think that we'll have another meeting with them. I think that, you know, they will. I know, I, I think that she'll come up with, you know, this is what capital outlay says.
Okay. And on, and on Monday, this past Monday, Liza and I joined Dr. Gallo and Dr. Jamie for a meeting with the sped parents. Wednesday, the eighth, CPEC, uh, several of us attended the CPEC meeting. There was a budget presentation by Liza and Linda. And then Carlos took Liza's place and Kate, Carlos and I stayed for the second half of the CPEC meeting. This Thursday, long range planning will be reviewing some RFPs from several engineering firms for a repair for the roof at the high school.
It's Wednesday, right?
Wednesday. Wednesday the fifteenth.
Yep.
Right. And John, I've just got a question for you, since I have before. We have a tentative meeting with the Wallfield Group on March first?
That's correct.
Good. And I asked that question, Libby's question, you mentioned that. And maybe, Liza, maybe you're gonna circle back to this, but what, at this point, then what is our plan for this Thursday, the sixteenth, interreacting with the, the Board of Selectmen with respect to the, the placeholder, the, the article? I assume it's, we won't, we just won't do it?
Well, now we won't do it.
Okay.
Um, so then the other question is, do we want to do a budget working session to think about the budget, um, based on feedback I'm getting from advisory that may lead to look at considering some cutting because of the deficit that's out there? Or do we want to wait until and do that whole discussion on March twenty-seventh? At a regular meeting? February twenty-seventh.
I'd rather wait until we have more information.
Okay.
I mean, personally, I just feel like it's a little premature to have that conversation until we get some updated feedback. Because we don't, might not know what the number is that we need to come up with.
Well, I don't know that we're gonna know by the next meeting, however.
I don't know.
Yeah, we haven't been told when the next forecast.
Two people can't be here anyway, right?
Yeah. Depending on the time.
No, but we have ACs tomorrow night.
Right. Okay, so we'll just, we'll wait till the twenty-seventh, and we'll just have a lengthy discussion, and hopefully we'll have more information at that point. Okay. Okay. Cross.
Correct.
That off. That's nice to do. Okay.
Can I just ask for, show hands, who might be coming tomorrow night, since it's not posted? You said you were gonna go.
I'm not.
Okay.
I might, but only if there's not.
Well, I'm, I'm in the same boat, not just what I know.
I might come and just listen.
Okay.
And I'll probably come.
Okay.
I think it's fine to come and just listen.
Just in the.
Yeah.
Whoever gets there first can sit up front. We'll be racing to be there.
Okay.
Thank you.
So. Number nine, adjournment.
Close to a jark.
It's only nine.
Who's second?
Number nine.
Kayden.
Who's second, Kay?
I'm just Kay.
All is a favor?
Aye.